Excuse me, everyone. Can you all hear me okay? I'd like to introduce Mary Evelyn Benneker, who's going to be our inductee to the gavel gang tonight to start the meeting. She is eight years old.
Yay! (applause)
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the June 7 regular meeting, starting at 7:00 PM, starting at 7:13. We're going to have a moment of silence. We don't have anyone for invocations. We'll do a quick moment of silence. Okay, call the roll.
Mayor Ernst.
I'm here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Councilmember Lennon Jones, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember John Hart, District 2.
Here.
Pledge your leadings.
Pledge your leadings to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our lifeline of the day is Princess. She's a sweet older dog, looking forward to enjoying her golden years. She takes a little time to warm up to people, but what she does, she's yours for life. And Lifeline is running a June special where all dogs over 25 pounds and all cats are free. So you can see Princess and more like her at www.lifelineanimal.org.
Thanks so much. So we're going to move immediately into public hearings. Susan, you want to read the rules for the public hearings?
Yes, just want to remind everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Remind everyone that there's a 30-minute time limit, and there's three minutes per
speaker. Also, to please be, in order to respect the time of each speaker and the rights of all citizens who wish to speak, neither the mayor nor any council member nor any city of Brookhaven staff shall cut a speaker's time by engaging in dialogue, answering questions, or responding to individual issues, concerns, or questions raised by the speaker. Only after all speakers have been heard and the public comments portion of the meeting has been closed will the mayor and council be able to address any concerns raised by speakers. Any member of the public who does not get an opportunity to speak will be allowed to speak first at a subsequent meeting, and the clerk will hold their speaker card until the date they choose to return. Also, just please, no clapping or comments. That's not in an orderly manner. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open, we're first going to discuss the resolution for traffic calming petition for North Thompson Road from Dresden Drive to Ashford Road, opening public hearing. First speakers.
Okay, our first speaker, North Thompson Drive, is Tom Stipes, and he's speaking in support.
I'm going to lead off, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I do want to walk through some of the background and our experiences on the street, what caused or motivated the action, and what we've been through over the past year in order to get to tonight. As everyone knows, it's, North Thompson is a major east-to-west cut-through that is not, of course, it doesn't have speed calming devices, and as a result, there's an inordinate amount of traffic, and that traffic, that speeds. We built and moved in three years ago, and from my front porch, I could easily see that. I'm closer to Dresden than I am to Ashford, and could easily see the speeding, and could easily see that it was a dangerous situation. For anyone that spends any time over there, you know the merging of construction traffic, large dumpsters, concrete trucks, heavy equipment, delivery vehicles, food service, delivery people. It's a constant flow, and then merging that in with strollers and pets, and, of course, the residents that won't enjoy the streets, it's a very dangerous situation. So I decided I wanted to try to do something about it, began to talk to my neighbors, contacted the city, and was given the three-step process. We began over a year ago. It's been a great deal of my time and a great deal of involvement from others on the street. I literally walked all the street. We had 89 houses, and we needed 65 percent of them to say yes to the process. The first step was to get 20 signatures, which we easily did, did that in an afternoon. Second step was to put the speed measurement devices in place, which were done, and we eclipsed that threshold, and then I had about 90 days to go get those signatures. And all I can say is I appreciate what you all have been through in terms of securing public vote and knocking on doors. I was quick to point out that I wasn't selling anything, and I was a neighbor, and most everyone came out and talked to me. I would say that I spoke to 80 of the 90 houses, and three of them voiced some sort of dissension. So in other words, it was an overwhelming extension of gratitude that we were doing it, that I was doing it, and for the need to have it happen. I will say, in the process of dealing with the city, it was fantastic. Huge props to Richard Meehan and his team. The process was smooth. The response was outstanding. It was very clearly laid out as to what we had to do to get it done, and I've never been more motivated to see it happen. I've got, some of our neighbors are here that are behind it, when the ultimate, the ultimate goal is to try to avoid a tragedy and injury before it happens, and this will help, this will, no doubt, it will help do it. So thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to hopefully seeing it through.
Questions?
Okay, we have Dick Rainey, and he opposes.
So my name's Dick Rainey, and I'm here in opposition to the speed breakers, speed humps, traffic calming, for a couple of reasons that I'm opposed to it, but I'm also here representing one of the people who originally signed the petition saying that they wanted the speed controls, and who, it was the wife that signed it, didn't talk about it with her husband, they've since discussed it, and they don't want the speed humps, and they have given me, in essence, a proxy to say that they don't want it. The only reason I even mention that is that without their vote, it doesn't get the 65 percent threshold to even be here under consideration. But I moved to Brookhaven in August from Dunwoody, from a neighborhood Winter Creek that put in speed humps five years ago, or something like that, and the speed breakers did not slow any traffic down at all. You have people who speed up between them, they slow down, speed up, slow down, speed up, and they're noisy. The people whose houses are next to them complain about the kaboom, 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 you know, all day long. It's like having construction going on next to your house. But predominantly, they're just not very effective, and so I'm opposed to them. I have a car that is not speed hump, is speed hump challenged. I have a short wheelbase car, and my wife can go over them at 40 miles an hour, doesn't even slow her down. My car, I can't do it at 20 miles an hour. So it doesn't affect everybody equally. I've got two dogs, that I'm out walking them on the street. We have four children, but we're opposed to the speed breakers. Thank you.
Again, please keep the comments and clapping down. Next, Susan.
I don't have any more for North Thompson, unless there's somebody oversighted. I had so many cards. Didn't sign up.
I would continue, yeah. Go ahead and speak, and then fill out the form afterwards.
Thank you. Jason Williams, I live on 2705 North Thompson Road. I have been in Brookhaven and at that address for five years now. I have two young boys, three and one. My wife and I are both runners. We are outside all the time. We play in our front yard all the time. I don't want speed humps, for some of the same reasons that he just mentioned, that they can be noisy if you happen to be the unlucky house that is sitting right out in front of them, but most importantly, because I don't think they're effective either. And I don't honestly see the issue with people speeding. Obviously, there's always going to be a certain amount of people that speed, but being outside all the time, being with my kids all the time, having those kids run around in the front yard all the time, I've never felt unsafe, and just feel that having these speed humps would be an unnecessary nuisance to the neighborhood. Thank you.
If you'd fill out a form for me. Okay, is there any other comments on the?
I'd like to say something on four.
Well, okay, when, usually in the public hearings, when you need to fill out a form beforehand, if you guys would come and fill out a form, we have 30, and if you want to speak officially.
Was that saying?
I'm saying, if you want to fill out a form, fill out a form. What? Exactly, I know, that's what I'm saying. Okay, go ahead.
I'm Mary Welsh, 2802 North Thompson Road, and you heard overwhelmingly that our neighborhood is pro the speed bumps. And if you look, if you drive down North Thompson, children, pets, strollers, night and day, and lots of traffic. So one day, someone's going to get hurt, and if we could do anything possible to slow that down with calming, I think we're going to do a lot of good in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to turn in a form?
Hi, I'm Mike Sweeney. I live on 2625 North Thompson, and like Tom, that's very close to Dresden, and it's kind of in that first dip, coming from Dresden, and from the other side, coming down from Valverde, and it's right in the bottom of the dip, and I see it when I'm outside with my, I've got an 11-year-old son and a four-year-old daughter, and cars pick up ridiculous amounts of speed in both those directions. It's not only cars, to be honest, the worst culprits of it are FedEx and UPS delivery trucks. They just fly through that section of North Thompson. So again, just echo what the previous speaker said, just from the number of yeses going through the initial process, I think this is something that we as neighbors on the street would like to see put through, and it's for the safety of my kids, and there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, a lot of runners. I think it's a necessary thing that we get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for North Thompson? I'm about to close public hearing.
Last one.
Okay.
Rob Dornbusch, 2610 North Thompson. I am four. I've been on the street for two years, been in the neighborhood for 10, lived on Craven Ridge for eight. I'm at that same intersection as Mike, where it dips down at both ends, and there is, of course, I can understand how other people on the street can see further north towards Ashford, where there's not as much of a speed issue, but when you have two roads that are steep, and cars aren't noticing how fast they're going, there's important things that are going on with kids out there, dogs, strollers, that need to be noticed. There's been multiple times that I've had to step in front of a car, just slow them down, because I'm walking with my child, and they're not paying attention. It's very important for these speed bumps to at least slow down these people, and I don't care if they have to speed up and slow down, speed up and slow down. I want to protect the road, other children, my children, so they're safe and they're alive. Very important. I'm always out there, I'm a runner as well, so I'm on the streets of Ashford Park all the time, and I can understand the need for speed bumps on this road. Thank you for your time.
Seeing and hearing no others, I am closing the public hearing. We are now going to talk about the resolution for traffic calming petition on North Thompson Road from Dresden Drive to Ashford Road. John, if you want to.
I was going to just, I was planning on making a motion. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Richard, you want to?
I don't have anything to say unless council has specific questions to me.
I do, I do, Richard. So when you did the study, did you put out traffic meters to look at the car count or speeds? Is that how you determined?
Yes.
And what were, what was the traffic count and speeds?
I don't know what the counts were. The speeds were upwards, well, the 85th percentile speed we measured was 32 miles an hour, which for a 25 mile an hour speed limit, there's also a significant number of vehicles, and I don't, I got it up in front of me, but I don't have a calculated percentage was, but, you know, exceeding even the 35 mile an hour, 10 miles over the speed limit, I think, just this one day, I mean, we're upwards of 40, about 40 vehicles, or 35 vehicles out of a total of 559, not quite 10 percent, but that's still high for a road. It's still a significant for a 25 mile an hour road.
But in your evaluation, you have minimum thresholds that have to be achieved before you make recommendations to us for traffic calming?
Yeah, we, usually, we're using 30 miles an hour is the threshold, and, you know, one of the, couple of the comments was about effectiveness. You know, speed humps are designed to, so that traffic, the 80, get the 85th percentile speed down to 25 miles an hour. They're not designed to have people go 15 miles an hour, and I, you know, I communicate that when we talk to the neighborhoods about that. They're not going to stop people, slow people down below, significantly below the speed limit, and again, yes, they can speed up in between the humps, but when we measure in between the humps and the after, what we're looking at is to get that 85th percentile speed close to that 25 mile an hour range, is what we'll do in the, when we go back afterwards and study that.
Okay. So I just want to say that, a couple of things to point out. We have speed bumps, I think, started with Ashford Road, Reading Road, Winding Lane, Green Meadows, Alba Valley, and Caldwell, all in that east to west. To approve all those and not approve this, I think, would not be right. I sympathize with the people that are against speed bumps, and I would love to take a more comprehensive approach to speeding, but this is the process now, and the proponents of this have followed the process, done everything that has been asked of them, and asked for a lawful and proper resolution to their petition. So with that, I move to approve the resolution for traffic calming petition for North Thompson Road from Dresden Drive to Ashford Road.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion on council? Any? Hearing, any comments? Hearing then, all those in favor of approving the traffic calming on North Thompson, say aye.
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 That was unanimous. Now, number two, resolution for traffic calming petition on Brookhaven Heights as a public hearing. I know this one is going to have a lot more folks in it. If you don't have, once we get through the list, and if we don't run out of time, we have a 30-minute window here, if you don't have a list in, I'm not, I'm not going to ask for any more volunteers. So you guys, that was my apologies on the first one, I shouldn't have done that. So if you want to speak, please get your comment card in beforehand. That being said?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. I'm being told by our clerk that we have 23 total comments, 13 for, 13 against. We're going to have one for, one against, a maximum of three minutes until we run out of time or run out of comments. So we'll call the first supporter, and go from there.
Why don't you just do 15 minutes of the for and 15 minutes of the against, and that way they?
Keep, keep one clock with three minutes, and do your 30 minutes there, or just kicking the average.
Or you can have the timer. Use my timer. Here we go. Be official, Mike.
I got it.
Okay, you got it?
Pause it in between.
Okay, the first, the first one for support is Giles Stevens.
All right, good to see everybody tonight. My name is Giles Stevens. I'm the president of the Brookhaven Heights Community Association. My wife and I live on Thornwell Drive, and we've lived in Brookhaven for over 10 years now. We have two kids, and we've really enjoyed, you know, getting to know our neighbors, and we love the neighborhood, you know, and it's been a great place these last five or so years. Brookhaven Heights consists of about 430 houses with about two cars in each driveway, and, you know, and yet we have thousands of cars cutting through our streets every day. So after nearly two years of working on different iterations of this project, with our traffic committee, along with countless volunteers, city staff, I couldn't be more proud of how everyone came together on this. I have to say that if renters and verbal yes votes counted, we would have had well over 300 votes in favor of this, out of the 270 that we needed. From early on, you know, the temptation on this to do nothing, you know, has been like a gravitational force, and I know there's really no way we could have overcome this poll without the hard work of so many volunteers, you know, and so with our new security cameras installed, sidewalks, crosswalks redone by the city, and now this plan making its way all the way through the petition process, I'm happy to say that our residents have really made a difference in Brookhaven Heights in this last year, and this really boils down to what kind of vision do we share for Brookhaven, for the city? You know, we envision a vibrant, walkable, safe, and livable community, and we think this plan follows with this balanced approach. No plan is perfect, but we believe in action, and this will be our first step as we continue to seek and implement further rounds of traffic calming and neighborhood improvements in the future. So just want to thank you guys for your time, and obviously ask for your support.
Andrew Kirkley opposes. Susan, if you could call the next person up so that they can get, be ready to?
Okay, the next one would be Jim Mallory.
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 Hi, how is everyone? I'm going to be very quick about this. I echo what the previous speaker was saying, is that there are some issues. The problem with the measure is it's a plan to benefit a few that goes against the many. Three roads, and if I'm incorrect, please help me, because we talked about it, and if I'm wrong, I'll support you, but to me, having only right turns onto Druid Hills is a problem for myself that lives on Standard Drive, 1124 Standard Drive Northeast. My wife's a teacher at Marist. I work with Emory University in the Atlanta VA. I'm all, we're always going towards North Druid Hills in that area. My stepchildren, their dad lives in Pine Hills, so North Druid Hills is the corridor. People turn left there all the time. We also come from Briarwood to enter our neighborhood. This plan, to me, is a rush, and I echo what you're saying. I understand action, but this is not a well-thought-out plan. And I'm all for putting signs, no through traffic, different kinds of methods for this. You know, the biggest issue in our neighborhood is the Starbucks and the accidents created by previous rushes, and I feel moves within the city that weren't well-thought-out, with where they put the cut on Colonial for Starbucks. This is another error, and I'll just leave it at that. I think a plan could work, but not this particular plan, as shown to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Mallory.
Mallory.
Mallory, sorry.
And the next, and the next one?
Yes, James Mallory, 2280 Matthew Street. Hello, y'all. I've lived in Brookhaven Heights before it was even Brookhaven Heights. I've been here about 30 years, so, and about 15 years ago, before the first speed bumps were even put in, one of my illustrious neighbors decided to run the stop sign at Thornwell, I think, and Matthew Street, and knocked three of the five, three of the four tires off my Azuzu pickup. If he hadn't, I'd still be driving my wonderful Azuzu pickup. And in these 30 years, I've seen Brookhaven Heights change, from on my section of Matthew Street, there were maybe two kids. We're now up to at least 10, and they play in the street, they ride their bikes, they throw balls, chase after the balls, right into the streets, and then we also have the people who walk, walk with their dogs, use my ivy patch and all these other good things, and I like to walk there, too. And at least once a week, I'm on the horn of my Cooper, telling somebody, please slow down and do not run the stop signs. I know the plan is not perfect, but it is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rale Carstens, and then we'll have Jim Markinson.
Cheryl Carstens, Ustinella Drive. I support Brookhaven Heights trying to come up with a plan that will benefit them and the traffic issues they're having. I do oppose this plan, though, in full implementation. If worst case, or best-case scenario, I would say that we try it on a trial run to see how it works, to make sure that their problem is not being fed over to Brookhaven Fields. We're in the same character area. Brookhaven Fields has lots of traffic, cut-through traffic right now. We're a community of 750 homes. I see people looking on their phones as they're driving through. Waze has a horrible, horrible delay problem with their system. I have, we've had people turn, miss their turn, but try to make it and end up on a yard. We've had two rear ends now from people that stamped on their brakes because Waze told them they were supposed to turn this way. We've got the same issue they have. I just think that this should be a more comprehensive study, and include both of the communities within the character area, instead of just implementing something as a Band-Aid. Thank you.
Mr. Markinson, support, and then we have Seth Ford.
Thank you. My name's Jim Markinson. My wife and I purchased our Thornwell Drive home about three years ago, in part due to the convenience that an urban-like location was, was going to provide us with easy access to both Peachtree and North Druid Hills, so it's not surprising to us that there's cut-through traffic. And we're probably in a minority in Brookhaven Heights, being pro-development, thinking that developing the MARTA tract, as an example, done intelligently is a good idea. That said, the fact is there are simply too many cars traveling through neighborhood streets, not designed for the amount and the speed of traffic we see every day, Sunday through Saturday, and at night. It continues to get worse. My wife and I are empty nesters. We don't have pets, but I share the concerns, the safety concerns, of those that have young kids and pets who have to deal with the constant traffic. We didn't move here expecting to play catch with our kids in the street, or letting the puppies running around unleashed. However, I'd like to be able to take a walk. I like to run. I want to be able to retrieve my own mail without the threat of being hit by a car, as I am now. Those signing on to the measure have done so in greater numbers than necessary for approval, and only a small fraction of us actually reside on the two most heavily impacted streets. What I've learned from postings on Facebook is that most of the opposition before you is based on three points, one of three points. There isn't enough traffic through the neighborhood to warrant such an inconvenient plan. Some are concerned that cars are going to be diverted onto their own streets, or third, we should wait for a better solution, as the problem is not volume, but speed in our neighborhood. Drivers are just as guilty as everybody else, and maybe we need more police enforcement. To all this, I say, number one, there's actual evidence showing the traffic load to be in the thousands of cars per day on just these two streets. It's certainly possible that some traffic will simply move to adjacent streets, but the reality is, the vast majority of cut-through traffic originates on Briarwood in the morning, turning right onto Druid Hills, and then left onto Thornwell or Standard, and reversing the route on the way home, suggesting otherwise, or pretending it's a quirk of nature that traffic predominantly cuts through the neighborhood, but just on these two streets fails to really recognize the actual traffic pattern on Druid Hills. I recognize that the drivers in our neighborhood are no better than the drivers anywhere else, and, but doing nothing is really no option at this point. I think it's more responsible to make these changes, then tweak or improve the program over over time based on real experience and not speculation rather than sitting around waiting for the perfect solution to appear. I also don't think that I want to waste our valuable police force on, uh, on them giving out tickets all day long. I have offered to host any neighbor to have a drink on my front balcony where they can witness the excessive traffic traveling often above the posted speeds up or down the Thornwell thruway. And though I'm a supporter of this plan, I admit that it's not perfect. But the time has passed and I ask for your support. Last motion. Thank you.
Seth Ford, and then we have Amy Smith.
Hi, good evening. My name is Seth Ford. I have lived in Brookhaven Heights for 12 years. During that time, my wife Sarah and I have had three children, boys aged seven to 11. We are that proverbial family whose children are chasing the balls in the street. We understand the need for a traffic calming, the right traffic calming plan in our neighborhood. This is not that plan. Because the most significant aspects of the plan limit access points to our neighborhood from five to two, it is not a traffic calming plan at all. It is by definition a traffic funneling plan. Indeed, eliminating left turns on Standard, Oglethorpe and Thornwell means the two remaining streets, Pine Grove and Colonial, will be thrown to the wolves, left to bear the entirety of cut through traffic through our neighborhood. I would encourage you to see attachment EFE at page 32 of the May 24th City Council memorandum. You can envision easily left-hand turns to greenlit cars, uh, off of Briarwood, making immediate right-hand turns that are unimpeded by traffic onto Pine Grove. You can see visually that the only left turn options for cars northbound towards Peachtree will be Colonial and Pine Grove. Particularly given the effects of Waze and other traffic finding apps as noted in the article in which Bates Madison was recently quoted, cut through traffic is not going away simply because three of the five streets become off limits. A traffic plan which calms the traffic of the northern part of the neighborhood only at the expense of the southern neighborhood is short sighted. It is not comprehensive and it should not be implemented. I urge the council not to act in favor of a plan simply because a plan exists. It is essential that it be the right plan. The focus going forward should be on speed bumps, stop signs, and most importantly, the intersection of North Druid and Peachtree, not eliminating access points through our neighborhood that result in increased, necessarily increased volume through two other streets. Thank you.
We have Amy Smith and then Simon Van Rosendale.
I just want to read an email that I submitted to you guys and Lily, I apologize, it came to you a few minutes later because I bounced back, but I submitted this, I just want to make sure everybody hears it. So I am on the Brookhaven Heights Community Association Board and have been working with the team of volunteers on this plan for over two years. An important piece of data that needs to be included for the record is the data from the Brookhaven Heights, or Brookhaven Police Department Speed Trailers from 2014. That was when we first started to research this and see if we actually had a problem or we as residents were just overreacting or being overly sensitive. After getting the speed trailer data back and seeing there were in excess of 17,000 cars in less than one week going down Thornwell and in excess of 18,000 cars in one week, less than one week actually, going down Standard, we actually realized we had a bigger problem than we even knew. I mean, I stand in my driveway and yell at cars, but this was factual data. So we had a recent accident involving a carpooling mother with kids in a car that would not have happened if this plan would have been implemented. That mother would not have been going out Thornwell to exit on North Druid Hills. There are several close call accidents weekly up and down Matthews at the cross streets. When Jay Maxx was mayor, he walked the neighborhood with us last summer. He witnessed two cars skidding to a stop to avoid hitting each other at Thornwell and Matthews, as well as a speeder flying down Standard, blowing the stop sign at Colonial and then flipping off a resident who yelled at him to stop. A neighbor's mailbox has been clipped or hit and knocked off four times in the last 75 days on Standard, my next door neighbor, presumably by either a speeding driver or a distracted one or both. I witnessed it one time. We understand we live in an urban neighborhood. These are public streets and we very much respect that. We aren't asking for closures, but devices to slow traffic where needed and turn restrictions to control volume where needed. Speed bumps do not control volume. We understand some believe the proposed traffic calming plan is an inconvenience. Quite frankly, it is to many of us who live here. However, that is a sacrifice we have to make in the name of safety. One resident on Matthews said, if I have to alter my daily route a little or have a few more cars going past my house so the safety of the entire neighborhood can improve and my kids can ride their bikes down the streets, I'm all in. This is the spirit in which this plan was born. We do not believe there's a perfect plan to address all the issues at once. We've spent the last two years researching, talking to residents, working with the city, making recommendations, learning what measures can help and what ones are enforceable and what we could actually get done and implemented. This plan is a building block to a larger effort that is underway for Brookhaven to manage the explosive growth in traffic. Our neighborhood is unique as it is flanked by two major arterial roadways, Peachtree and North Druid Hills. In any situation, it makes sense to stop the bleeding where it is worst and then work from there. This wasn't developed out of emotion or on a whim and I've read the comments from other residents in other neighborhoods asking why they can't do the same. The answer is they can if they want to put in the work that we have. So I urge you guys to please vote this in. We acknowledge it's not perfect and I'm done.
Simon Van Rosendale, I think is his handwriting. And then we have Mike Sanders after him. Simon Van Rosendale.
And the person after Susan.
Then Mike Sanders.
Well, thank you for giving this opportunity to speak to you. Simon Van Rosendale is my name. I've lived in, uh, Brookhaven for 17 years on 1056 Pine Grove Avenue. Um, I've heard the discussions tonight. Nobody's denying there's a problem or a safety issue and that there are more cars than we want. Um, and I understand that it is an urban neighborhood. It's, the street is not meant to play with your kids. I mean, that's what yards are for. Um, so we, we did have an expert come, a consultant who was paid for by the city. And what surprises me is that we've gone, this proposal is exactly the opposite of what that expert recommended. They specifically recommended not to close the streets. And I think that's really where the greatest angst is in the closure of the three streets, that it literally will funnel that traffic to the other streets. There's no denial that, you know, there will be traffic that will move and pick those other streets. And therefore I think, number one, we've got a, an expert who's told us not to do this in direct contradiction to their, um, report. Secondly, as you talked about a precedent on the previous, uh, resolution, I believe if you close three streets, and essentially we're talking about closing them, we've got one weird turn in, so it's not theoretically a cul-de-sac, but essentially we're closing these three streets. That's gonna set a precedent that you're gonna have to live with based on what your previous vote was for all the other neighborhoods and is that really what the city of Brookhaven is about, closing down the neighborhoods? When we will pay our taxes on the belief that you're gonna maintain these thoroughfares for the good of all the homeowners, not just a select group? And again, it was only a very small, um, slight positive vote that allowed this to even get here and in looking at the, the list there, it would appear to me that we could, if the no votes had a chance to talk those homeowners, we could easily overturn a majority of those votes in some of these other streets and we wouldn't have 65%. Thirdly, I think there's a substantial financial gain to the homeowners in those three streets by eliminating the traffic and pushing it over to Pine Grove and Colonial homeowners who will likewise have a decrease in the value of their homes. And again, is that the precedent this city wants to set? Fourthly, there are recommendations that have been made by your own planner that address the problem with no left turns during certain hours of the day except for homeowners. Um, there's a, a believer proposal from G Dot to put the extra lane to allow the northbound people on Peachtree Road to make it to North Druid Hills to not have to do the cut through. So in quick summary, I'm looking at the time. Number one, direct contradiction to the exploit report. Two, sets a precedent that I believe is not one this city should, um, follow. Two, financial gain for homeowners unfairly penalizing the others. And four, there are much better solutions that balance the concerns of all parties, not just three streets. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
One of our rules is no clapping, please. Um, we have Mike Sanders and then we have Keenan Klinger.
Thank you. I am, uh, Brookhaven Heights resident at the corner of Thornwell and North Druid Hills. And I certainly understand the other neighbors and their, their objections, but I don't think they understand the greater good of the community. And that's what I'm here to speak more about than anything else. The inconvenience that they speak of would probably not affect anyone more than my wife and I who live on the corner of Thornwell and North Druid Hills. We would not be able to exit right out of our street to go down North Druid Hills towards 85, nor would any of our guests be able to turn into Thornwell coming from that direction to visit us. And yet we're more than happy to suffer those consequences for the greater good of our community because I will tell you that our street is becoming almost unbearable. I'm gonna give you just a couple of quick examples and then, uh, sum it up as great as I can. I work in Buckhead and I come into the neighborhood by the Starbucks when I return home in the evenings. Oftentimes I cannot get in my own driveway for up to five to seven minutes because of cars backed up through our neighborhood waiting to turn right onto North Druid Hills. In fact, this past Christmas, the UPS truck was in our driveway trying to get out when I stopped to allow him to leave our driveway so that I could turn in. I was passed by a motorist on the left hand side speeding to the stop sign that almost hit the UPS driver. The, the traffic is purely crazy on our end of the neighborhood. When I leave in the mornings, I'm often backing out of my driveway while a driver turns in from North Druid Hills. I've had horns blared at me as I back out of my own driveway. And then as I stop to let them go, I watch them go through our neighborhood and wait and cause a backup to turn left into Starbucks. This wasn't the plan of Brookhaven and this isn't what our neighborhood should have to suffer during these times. It is really almost unbearable. I understand this plan might not be perfect, but if not this, what? Where is the next plan and how long does it take to develop? We followed all the processes that the city asked us to. We put petitions and detailed letters in every mailbox in the neighborhood, time after time, and gave everyone a chance to have their say. So we followed the process, the votes came in and it was approved that we would move forward with this plan and I'd like to ask the council to do the same thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please no clapping. Mr. Klinger, please, and then we have Chad Bowles.
Hi, my name is Keenan Klinger. I live at, uh, 2270 Matthew Streets, the corner of Matthews and Colonial. Um, I'm opposed to this traffic calming plan mostly based on the right and right out on Standard, Thornwell and Oglethorpe. I think we've all agreed, um, that we're actually just rerouting traffic from North Druid Hills in the morning. Um, instead of turning left on Standard, Thornwell and Oglethorpe, they'll now be turning on Pine Grove, driving down Pine Grove to Matthews or to Colonial, or they'll be heading through the neighborhood all the way through Colonial. Um, currently, if they turn on Standard or Thornwell, they're driving through the neighborhood for about two tenths of a mile. If they turn down Pine Grove or Colonial, they'll be in the neighborhood for about six tenths of a mile. So now we're tripling the length, um, of time that they're spending in our neighborhood. Um, in addition to that, um, the traffic flow right now impacts about 40 homes, um, that are east of Matthews on Standard, Thornwell and Oglethorpe. Now we'll be redirecting that, those thousands of cars a day that are traveling down those streets, um, throughout the majority of the neighborhood impacting over 140 homes. Um, so like my, my opposition is definitely based on the right in, right out, um, on those three roads. Uh, I don't know if there's a, uh, possible compromise where we delete those right in, right out from the plan. I think that seems to be, uh, the major issue for most of the homeowners is that we're di, just diverting traffic, um, from driving through the neighborhood for a small while to driving through the neighborhood for a significantly longer period of time and, and sort of picking winners and losers based on the traffic volume. Um, so that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Bowles and then we have, um, I think it's Fred Leo. Chad Bowles first.
Yeah, hey, can we put, uh, put this on the picture? Can you get a picture of that? Chad Bowles, I live on 2291 Cusawaddy. Uh, Bates, we are both in District Three. We are all your constituents. It's because you're dividing our community that just one hour ago you referred to this side as the Hatfields and this side as the McCoys. That's wrong. It's your lack of leadership is why we're here today discussing and not celebrating together a comprehensive solution to our neighborhood traffic. I lived in beautiful Brookhaven Heights in the nineties. I lived on Standard. I was T-boned at Matthews and Thornwell. I know as good as anybody how bad their traffic is. And now I'll show you the problems that are gonna be created by your slipshod leadership. Attached is a map and creased that's a cut through for Brookhaven Fields as a result of the additional traffic that will be pushed up onto Do, North Druid Hills, cutting through to Buford Highway. The comprehensive traffic plan and the Brookhaven Heights traffic study show the most effective, affected and current bottleneck is at Briarwood Road and North Druid Hills. Currently afternoon traffic coming on north, north on North Druid Hills backs up all the way to Lenox Park. No one will turn left on Pine Grove or Colonial headed to Briarwood because they won't be able to turn left. Therefore, they will stay on Peachtree until they turn right onto North Druid Hills. The last person in line in the queue will turn left onto Sylvan or to Star or to Sylvan to cut over to Briarwood Road. A comprehensive plan voted on, signed and approved over two years ago states traffic studies will be completed for all character areas within an emphasis on the neighborhood surrounding MARTA. Please implement these studies before any additional rezonings are approved. As a pass, I would point to, if you're going to implement the studies that have been asked for, that it simultaneously, you would add a traffic light at Cusawaddy and Briarwood Road. Additionally, make Sylvan and Star left outs only and right ins only. And that's all I've got.
Fred Leo.
And again, no clapping.
And then we have Frank McCloskey after Fred Leo.
My name is Frank McCloskey. I have been a resident of Brookhaven Heights since 2000, have lived in the area since 1959. So I have a pretty good sense of the character of the neighborhood. I want to thank the mayor, city council for what you all are doing to try to make our city better. Uh, I want to thank Bates and Richard for your leadership and your professionalism for the last two years. It has, it has been noticed and thank you very much for that. Uh, in the last 15 years since my wife and I have been in Brookhaven Heights, the character of the neighborhood has changed. You have young families, you have children now and that's wonderful. It's a vibrant community. What also has changed is the character of the cars, the volume of cars who are coming through the neighborhood, the aggressiveness, the recklessness and the speeding of cars going through the neighborhood. So when you have young families, children with this other effect of, of the cars, the volumes, it's, it's, it's a real, it's not a positive cause and effect, it's a very negative cause and effect. Two years ago, the, the neighborhood entered in a good faith agreement and collaborative process to address our safety concerns. I will disagree with others who have said that there's no precedent for this. A precedent has been set. The traffic calming plan and the process that you have in place is a fair, it's transparent, it's there, it's been used before. So it has been in place. We have abided by the process. We've looked at information. Well, first of all, the city has defined what the affected area is. That's transparent. So we were working with the affected area. We gathered data that Amy has talked about earlier. We considered options. So whatever options we came up with was not some random thought. We had to work with the city to negotiate. This is what we want to do. We've educated residents. We've educated residents. We've gone door-to-door. And the fact that we have 65% plus of residents, I don't want anybody to just blow that off. That is a challenging hurdle. It's fair, but 65% of our neighborhood has spoken. They're not here tonight, but they're there with those petitions and their signatures. So, you have to trust the process. Two last points. Big picture, we support 100% what you're trying to do to address traffic calming in a holistic way. What we are doing in Brookhaven Heights is mutually supportive of that. This is not either-or, this is and-both. Brookhaven Fields, I understand the frustration that they have. I personally avoid going through Brookhaven Fields because of what they've expressed. But there is a process in place that they can follow. It's a good process. They have some great ideas, but get their residents behind it. So, I'm just going to ask the city council to approve the plan, trust the process, do not deny the 65-plus percent of our residents who want this. Thank you.
I called out Fred Leo, but he did not come up here. Okay, I had called you before him, so. And then, the next one is David Todd.
How much time do you have left?
Of the 30 minutes, we got three minutes and eight seconds remaining.
Hello, council. I just wanted to say that the traffic study that I saw on the Brookhaven Post seems to have no relation to this one, and I'm confused by that. But my key objection is that for people in Brookhaven Heights that want to go to the grocery store, we're sent on a route that is 10 times more dangerous than if we can pass through Brookhaven Heights. And I just don't feel we should be directed to, in the name of traffic calming, to a more dangerous route. And you can go ahead and check the figures against your incident reports. Thank you.
David Todd.
I'm David Todd. I live at 1207 Thornwell with my wife and two kids and my dog. And we've been in the neighborhood for 10 years. And first of all, I want to say, we have speed bumps and stop signs. That's not what the problem is. Problem is the volume of people coming through. And anyway, it would only take about eight more minutes to go all the way to North Druid Hills, turn right, and go down. Our issue is the cut-through going to Briarwood. I can't get out of my driveway. And I think some gentleman said that yards are for kids. That gentleman obviously doesn't have kids. I've seen four accidents in the last 10 years of people trying to turn left on the North Druid Hills from Thornwell, to a point where ambulances were there. With knowing what I know, because I'm in commercial real estate, with the Boys and Girls Club being up for sale, the fact that all of the new development with the Marta Station coming, with the new Walgreens and Piedmont Hospital coming there across from the Starbucks, and the big monstrosity that they're building there, that's going to be even more traffic coming through the neighborhood. And we know that the cut-throughs on our street is in the thousands, not in a few more cars. It is a lot of cars. I can't get out of the driveway in the morning. I can't get in the driveway in the afternoon. And if we could just eliminate the fact that you went right and then left and force people to really get on North Druid Hills, I mean, I think that would be effective for everybody. I think it's easy to stand here and say, well, I oppose it because I think that's going to be more traffic to the other neighbors. Well, that would be fine, too, if we could disperse some of the traffic. But for those to stand and say, we've gone through the process, got the signatures, petitions, the opposition doesn't have a plan, they just know that they don't like our plan. And so, I would ask you guys, who, by the way, I think you're doing a great job, to be for our plan and allow us, allow my kids to play, whether they want to play in the street or not. I think that's fine. Thank you.
Mayor, we have 13 seconds remaining of the 30-minute.
I'll continue it out.
I move to extend, I don't know, 10 minutes?
Motion for extending to 10 minutes?
Second.
Motion second. We extend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Extended 10 minutes. Next.
All right. For opposition, we have Renee Jorgensen.
And call the next person.
After that, we have Will Weber. That would be support.
My name is Renee Jorgensen. I live at Wethers Creek, and I've been there 30 years. I might be the oldest resident of Brookhaven Heights. I have seen a lot of changes during that time and a lot of constructions. I just wanted to say that we have, right now, some speed bumps, four-way stops, and I don't see the need to add any speed bumps. There might be a few things that could improve the situation, but just to take Colonial Drive, which is the street that I live on, from Kroger, almost to the corner of Peachtree, all the way to North Druid Hill, this is half a mile. There are four stops, four-way stops area, eight speed bumps in half a mile. Adding speed bumps will create an obstacle course. And there are other streets also with two-tenths of miles, with two stops and three speed bumps. I think this is pretty sufficient because the traffic has been curbed down quite a bit. You wouldn't believe how it was 20 years ago. One thing that we must not forget is that Brookhaven Heights is not a gated communities. People who want to live in a gated community should go to a gated community. And also, I love children, but the streets are not playgrounds. Thank you very much.
Will Weber. Dan Sanders, after Will.
How y'all doing? Will Weber, 1174 Standard Drive. Appreciate y'all having us here and allowing us to come speak with you. One thing I want to speak of first in regards to the traffic studies is that analysis showed that traffic going northbound on North Druid is turning into the neighborhood before the queue of traffic back up onto North Druid, onto Colonial. That is AM and PM. The traffic that, you know, we had Standard, Thornwell, and Ogglethorpe is where the volume of traffic far exceeded the threshold. We had to put together a plan. We threw multiple ideas, such as stop signs on Matthews, which I think need to be revisited after this recent wreck that sent a mother to the hospital, and her two children were hurt as well. But we threw everything to the wall we could. This is what stuck. This was agreed to, that would be the best plan to implement. The traffic that we're mainly combating is coming from Briarwood, AM, and PM on Standard, Thornwell, and Ogglethorpe as well. I live on Standard, and when I'm coming northbound on North Druid, I turn on Colonial just to go home. I don't want to get in that traffic. And with the building that they're going to, you know, evidently, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club for sale and the construction with the Walgreens, new building, as well as the Marta, that area and corridor is only going to get worse. Yes, we have to work on timing of the lights on North Druid Hills. Everybody agrees to that. Yes, we should add a right-turning lane off of Peachtree onto North Druid, and the light timing on Peachtree. We all agree to that. But the problem that these three streets are having right now is funnel from Briarwood into AM and PM. Everybody's arguing with Briarwood, Pine Grove, and Colonial getting funneled more traffic. Well, they're already getting it. I do it. I live on Standard and I take that route. And the data analysis also says that that's where the majority of the traffic is already turning onto. So, to say they're getting more traffic from us by shutting this down, you know, I tend to argue. Because what it's ultimately going to do is traffic bringing, that's taking Briarwood into PM, they're not going to go to Pine Grove and Colonial and turn left back on North Druid in the PM. That's ridiculous. They won't ever make it. So, that traffic is going to be, you know, that traffic from Briarwood is going to be forced to take, you know, North Druid, the road that it should be taken, the road that it was meant to be. I lived in the neighborhood for seven years. For the first three years, we had no problems. It's getting worse, and this is what was approved by the city that we could do, and I ask that you push it through. Thank you.
Dan Sanders, and then Deborah Curriton.
Hey, good evening, folks. Don Sanders, I'm on Matthews Street, own the property in the neighborhood since 1999. I would like to reiterate a significant point that was made tonight, and that this is not a traffic calming measure, this is traffic diversion. We're taking five cuts right now that are on North Druid Hills Road, we're moving it down to two. Gentlemen, a couple of them have made a great point. They couldn't get into their driveway because traffic had backed up. That's when the public has five options right now. You're going to move it down to two options. What about those people that have curb cuts on those streets? They'll never get into their neighborhood. It's a plan made somewhat in desperation. I understand the issues. I've got kids. My kids have been named specifically tonight by one of the neighbors. My kids are riding bikes in the neighborhood. I love the neighborhood. I love these folks that I oppose their plan on. We want to be there, but we need a more comprehensive traffic plan. At a minimum, I would ask you tonight, given the quantity of comments and the quantity of attendance here, this is unprecedented. It should, at minimum, be deferred until the city can consider this in greater detail, come up with a more comprehensive plan. We ask that, as both sides of the neighborhood, I think we can come to agreement on that. Relative to the traffic study, they've made mention that four-way stops are not protocol for a neighborhood of ours. Our neighborhood is not standard. Protocol is made for standard situations. We've got a dysfunctional state road, Peachtree Street, that has a dysfunctional traffic light. That's where the traffic is coming from. This is not a standard situation. We can put four-way stop signs at every intersection in our neighborhood. You can have it done by the end of the week. It wouldn't cost much money at all. It's even reversible if it's not a good idea. Shutting off these streets is bad practice. It's a bad idea. We've got to defer the decision. We ask you to take that action. Thank you.
Deborah Curriton. Deborah Curriton, and then, we have Stephen Hudgens.
Good evening. Thank you. I can only speak for my little corner of the world, which is the corner of Ogglethorpe and North Druid Hills. We've lived there about a year, and I've learned to listen for the squealing of tires. I've had to go out and help high school students, several different people. There's no crosswalk there and there's no sidewalks, so that in and of itself makes it difficult for pedestrians. None of the people at that corner turn left out of it now because it would be dangerous. We all go down Colonial or another way. So, that is also, I guess, something that I think about. But just in terms of the plan, I don't know, maybe there is something different we can do, maybe there's something different we can discuss. But as I look at all of the work that has been done, and I stand on my street and look out at Briarwood and know that I am only going to turn right at any time off of Ogglethorpe onto Briarwood, I would ask you to at least take that consideration. Thank you.
Stephen Hudgens. Bob Ewing.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Stephen Hudgens. I live on Ogglethorpe Avenue. I've been a resident of Brookhaven Heights for 22 years. I've watched the gentrification that's been spoken of tonight. I propose, or oppose, rather, the traffic calming measures that are being mentioned. I'm not against a solution. I would tell you that in my possession, I have an email where our association has literally enlisted, asked for some people to be dropped from the list that are paid members, so that the comment was, "We can railroad our agenda." I think having them contact Mehan will only open a can of worms. I'm not sure how we can dodge it, but I think we can, and we should. So, where I'm headed with this is evidence-based planning. Are we considering what is the real solution versus a railroading of an agenda supported by few? I don't think anyone in my neighborhood perhaps denies, from what I've listened to, that traffic calming measures are a necessity. What I am concerned with, is it evidence-based? Is it data-researched? Is it plausible? Does it support future growth for the Brookhaven good of all? Once the Brookhaven Marta Station becomes a reality, what impact would we consider? Are we looking at a globalization of the Brookhaven area or our own neighborhood for our own rights? Some of the people who claim that they have forwarded their votes, I have a list of at least six homes that are vacant, one of the individuals lives in India, and they are renters. I'm not certain that those votes count, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think there are more. As was stated in a meeting we held privately in February, that some of these votes were very difficult to obtain, and the map that was held by the consultant in where the enlisted, those in proposal or in favor were listed in green, were never present to obtain the vote. So, I guess what I'm questioning more is not so much that there's a plan that's needed. I'm asking for an evidence-based, engineer-oriented, not single consultant design, but a community coming together in conversation that will actually propose a valid growth proposal as we did with the LCI for Brookhaven originally, and it will support the throughput that we need for safety of children, families, and all of us, whatever activity we may be involved in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have 18 seconds remaining of the 10 minutes.
I'll take a motion.
I move to extend by six minutes. By a second.
How many more people do we have?
Yeah. Yeah. Wait, hang on. Let's just take a count. Looks like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, about 7 or 8. So, 10 minutes, I move to...
Nine more.
Go ahead. If you'll take a friendly amendment to move it to 10 minutes.
Yep.
And I accept that as a second?
What?
Please accept no more cards. Some people turned in cards really late.
Cards are shut down. We will, guys, I mean, we're going to go until...
We'll do the 10 minutes.
So, no, let's go to three minutes of people with cards, per card. We're going to go to the end. I'm not going to stop the conversation.
Make it 20 minutes until we get through.
That would be, that would be... That's fine.
20 minutes.
20 minutes. There's motion for 20 minutes. My second stands. There's motion second. Is all in favor, say aye. Aye. That's a 20 minutes. Continue.
Hello, I'm Bob Ewing. I've lived in Brookhaven Heights for about 18 years. I live at 2301 Valley Brookway. I don't think there's any question that there's issues in the neighborhood. I'm proposing that if something better does not get proposed as such that we've heard tonight, that we put in the street adjustments on the three streets, starting at Standard, and if, see how that goes, and then, if necessary, which I'm not real in favor of, is to put additional speed bumps in. 12 additional speed bumps to me in the neighborhood with what we've got now is just complete And I think that is the major concern. There's no question that all those streets are going to have the traffic pushed down to Colonial and the other street adjoining Colonial. And I have to add, just on a side note, that I'm a bike rider. Those additional speed bumps are going to be a hazard for bike riders that come through the neighborhood, and I know there's not that many, but I just want to throw that out for consideration, considering everybody's always talking about the walk and livability issues in Brookhaven. So, I throw that out for consideration. Thank you.
Then, we have Brandon Guilford.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I live at 2308 Colonial Drive. I've been there for 29 years, and I think I have not heard one speaker yet really speak to what the reason is for the cut-through traffic to begin with, and that's because Peachtree Road is a cluster, okay? And I would ask that the city of Brookhaven work with the GDOT to come up with a plan to do something about it. I would ask you also to defer this plan until Peachtree Road is addressed. The reason there's cut-through traffic is because people are trying to get off of Peachtree. So, to create a further obstacle course in our neighborhood is not going to stop it. I spoke to the engineer who did the study, and he told me if you did these extra measures that they're asking for, it might add, quote, "up to 30 seconds to the transit time of cut-through traffic." 30 additional seconds is not going to defer, it's not going to stop the cut-throughs. Not compare... not compared to sitting on Peachtree. So that's my main opposition to this plan. Let's address Peachtree first, and then we'll see what's left. Secondly, the traffic study says at peak hours, there's 411 cars in the AM and 292 cars in the PM. To be a cut-through, you have to cross the bridge, everyone agrees about that. If you have 411 in the morning and 292 in the evening, or vice versa, I'm sorry, 292 in the morning, 411 in the evening, that includes the residents of the neighborhood. There's 410 houses in this neighborhood, and most of them have two or three cars. So how many cars are indigenous to the neighborhood? Quite a few of these. 411 doesn't seem like a great number to me with that many homes in this neighborhood. Next, the Brookhaven Post reported on June 1st about the traffic study, it said, quote, "Few vehicles traveling at a speed that could be enforceable." In other words, they're not speeding. There's so many barriers in there now with stop signs and speed bumps, it's hard to gain enough speed for them to use radar. So the police have not been very effective in controlling speed for that reason. Now, I know that the Brookhaven Heights Community Association has claimed that there's 4,500 cut-through cars a day in the neighborhood. Well, if there are, why aren't they going over the bridge? With 411 and 282 at peak hours, that 292, that doesn't equal 4,500 cars. If you go there during the middle of the day, there's almost no traffic. I've taken a video standing in my driveway...
Thank you very much.
That, it's not 400 every hour.
Thank you.
400 per hour.
That's only during peak hour.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Guilford, I live at 2416 Matthews, I'm in support of this petition. Couple comments, I believe a few of the recent proponents of this were, live in cul-de-sacs, so, you know, don't deal with the cut-through traffic that we do. Another comment, the 23% of our neighborhood that lives out of the country, in Dubai, Japan, everywhere else, they were contacted and signed this petition, so it wasn't, we're not pulling graves. Okay, that's what I was heard, thank you. So I wanted to state a different position. One, I live on Matthews, which is one of the streets in the neighborhood in this northeast corridor that's probably the least impacted by cut-through traffic. However, with the changes in the traffic patterns, my street will become much more heavily trafficked. And although I have kids and play in the yard, I was out gardening today at the mailbox, I'm willing to accept that for the better of the whole neighborhood, knowing that the people driving on these streets will not be speeding home, looking at their phone, texting, doing other things, preoccupied with, you know, trying to get home and pay attention to who lives in the neighborhood, in the community, and drive a little slower, just be a happier community in whole. And I think that's what, you know, we're all looking for in Brookhaven, and that's what everyone over here is supporting, is just improving our neighborhood, and this is the way we came up to do it. And we followed all the protocol and everything that was asked of us, and got the signatures, and so we urge you all to consider that and vote yes. Thank you.
David Forney, and then we have Ward Entricken. Entricken, but David Forney first.
Good evening, thank you. My name is David Forney, I've been living in Brookhaven Heights for the last six years. I'm against this resolution, and let me tell you a couple of things here that we haven't talked about. We talk about the process was followed, that's incorrect. I mean, I found out about the plan when it was ready to be signed and approved, and basically was shoved down the throat of the people in the neighborhood, they walked the neighborhood, and they were putting pressure on people, and they were stating incorrect facts, saying, for example, that experts were recommending what they were proposing, which is not true, because a lot of the recommendations from the experts are against what they're saying. I think in your role, it's not only about having 65% or more, I think you want to make sure that it's done right. Being done right is making sure that you've got experts, engineers, real data, real studies, not looking at the problem, we all agree there's a problem, but looking at the proposed solution. I don't see that today. My last point is on the 65-plus percent. You heard some comments about that today, we have some people in the room who are counted as a yes, and there are no. So I think you really need to audit that 65-plus percent, because I think there's some game playing going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name's Ward Entricken, I've lived at 1192 Thornwell Drive for the past 11 years, and during that time, I have seen traffic get progressively worse. You know, and I also want to point out that my neighbors that took the initiative to take on this study, I really appreciate, because it's a thankless job, and there is no perfect solution, but this is a good solution, and this is a good start, and, you know, it's easy to be a Monday morning quarterback and question everything, but at the end of the day, you know, if we look, if we hold out for the perfect solution, there will be no solution. There will be no solution. Because, you know, this took two years, and I find it hard to believe that some of these people are going to take the time to do that, okay? So, that being said also, I've got a six-year-old and a four-year-old, okay? We've got a problem now, let's do something about it now, okay? Just one last story, and I'll end, but my wife is driving home one day, just past the intersection at Matthews and Thornwell Drive, and she's going to take a left into our driveway. Somebody tries to pass her, almost T-bones her, right in front of our house, and then has the nerve to yell all kinds of expletives at her, and, you know, that's just what's going on right now. We've become a path for commuters, and, you know, it's not going to get better unless we do something. So I just urge you to support this plan, and thank you.
We have Brent Malat and Sharice Malat. I guess there's just one speaker.
Hi, my name's Brent Malat, I've lived in Brookhaven Heights for 10 years now. I love the neighborhood. I think everybody is so well-intentioned here, I mean, everybody agrees that traffic is a big problem. I mean, I've almost been hit walking our dog before. But I'll tell you that, you know, as a resident, I want to be able to leave and enter my neighborhood from whatever street. I do very much agree with the fact that we have five streets going down to two, that's going to cause a problem. It will absolutely cause more cut-through traffic in the other streets. You know, and David mentioned a second ago, that there are people that are counted as yes, who voted no, who are no, okay? Squatters in the back are counted as yes, there are no. Renters were counted as yes, don't believe renters should be counted as yes. In addition to my neighbors across the street, two of them were counted as yes, I know there are no. So I disagree that 65% is an accurate number. So I'm asking you guys to defer the decision until later on. Additionally, we have a sinkhole on Lorraine Street that we can't even get fixed, and we're worried about closing the streets. So we should also look at other options within the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Mary Welsh.
And then we have Janet Eason.
Good evening, I'm Janet Eason, I'm a past president of the Brookhaven Heights Association. Bates, I think you're doing a great job, and I love all of my friends here in Green. I love that you care enough. I don't care that you're on the opposite side of me. You care about the children in our neighborhood, and I have two who like to play in the street. I worked really hard to get speed bumps in our neighborhood. I know it's a pain, I know it takes a lot of work. I want a plan that will benefit everybody, but I do feel that this will funnel traffic down to three streets, and that really we're just throwing those three streets under the bus. And even if I didn't live on one of those three streets, I would feel that way. I want us to do what's best, you know, for the whole neighborhood. I do think we ought to defer this vote, you guys can see this is really divisive. It is a good start, it's got some good things. I'm all for more speed bumps, I'm all for some four-way stops, I'm all for some roundabouts. I just don't want us to start off good, but then have a plan that really impacts negatively the streets that we've discussed tonight. So, you know, I know that there was some pressure put on some people to be in favor of this. I'm not pointing any fingers directly, but I will say that I was called upon three times and pressured to support this, and so I feel like there probably was some pressure put on people to support this, and that that 65% might not really reflect the views, the viewpoints of our neighborhood. So I'd like for you to take that into consideration. And again, I think we need some more time, and I know that's a drag, I know people are ready to get something done. I would love to, you know, take stop signs tonight and stick them up. I would like to get something done, I am a get-er-done kind of person, but I just don't think this is the best plan, so I would ask that you not vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Jolie Spurlin, and then Charles Mathis.
Hello, Jolie Spurlin, I lived in Brookhaven Heights for 10 years. I'm opposed against closing the street, I just don't think that's the right solution. I think maybe we need to concentrate on Peachtree, and maybe Colonial, the bridge, and just find out a better solution. I just, and again, the 65%, I don't know how they got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Mathis.
Yeah, last one.
We have Suzanne Malavet, or Mallaret.
Good evening, I'm Charles Mathis, I live on Oglethorpe Avenue, and I just want to say, I respect this process, I respect our representatives, and I respect everybody that put in all the work to bring a measure like this to this point. But I oppose this proposal. I share the concerns of some of our other residents, that it's not data-driven, in fact, it's directly at odds, it seems, with the consultants' traffic study that was required under City of Brookhaven procedures. Those procedures are designed to protect the noes in the room against a handful of community activists that patrol the neighborhood with a petition. They were aggressive, they called my wife naive in our own living room, we are absolutely a no. I hear a lot about following the process, but I want to point to a process that I was able to locate when I was researching this problem. It's the City of Brookhaven Traffic Calming Policy. It says on there that a traffic study must be conducted, and that traffic study must support, at a minimum, a few requirements. Among those requirements is a requirement that the traffic study supports that it does not divert traffic onto other streets in the neighborhood. It's not a traffic funneling measure. I think you've heard that from these residents, that this is essentially a traffic funneling measure, so it doesn't meet, at a minimum, the requirements of city policy. There is another requirement that requires, at the 85th percentile, when you do the speed study, that at a minimum, the speed study confirms that traffic is going at least five miles an hour over the stated speed limit. We did that study, that study confirmed that traffic was actually going three and four miles under the speed limit in our neighborhood. This proposal, while well-intentioned, it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of city policy. I encourage you to reject this proposal, let's go back to the drawing board, let's propose something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Suzanne, she's the last one.
And again, folks, please.
Good evening, my name is Suzanne, excuse me, Suzanne Malavet, I've lived in Brookhaven Heights for over 20 years. I am opposed to this plan because, for a few reasons. One is that it is funneling traffic through two streets that is now going through five. It is inconveniencing the people on those streets. But my biggest concern is that we're not addressing the right problem, and that is the traffic on Peachtree at the intersection of North Druid Hills. That's where we should be concentrating. If we can eliminate that bottleneck, then we don't have this issue in our neighborhood. We've already put in speed bumps, you know, I think four-way stops are great, in fact, I was hit at the intersection of Pine Grove and Colonial one time, since then, there's been a four-way stop sign put in there, and that has been much better since then. I would totally support those at other intersections in our neighborhood, but limiting the way that we ourselves can get out of our neighborhood does not solve the problem. The real problem is on Peachtree Road, and that's where I think you should be concentrating. You've already put a huge structure at the main exit from our neighborhood onto Peachtree Road, which I have no idea how much traffic that's going to bring into our neighborhood. The MARTA property is going to be redeveloped, that's going to bring even more traffic to our area. Let's concentrate on the right problem, and make that intersection better for everybody, and that will solve this. I think this is a misguided effort. We already have the right measures within our neighborhood, let's just make it better outside of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last card I called was Mary Welsh, I called her earlier, she expressed support, but she didn't come forward, so...
Okay, with that, I close public hearing. Okay, I'll have questions of counsel to staff, or any questions, I'll start with Bates, being your district.
Sure. Couple of questions. Richard, on the map that's in the petition, it has green for parcels approving and blue for other. Does the blue mean that was a no vote, or that was a vote that just wasn't a yes?
It wasn't a, it just means it was not a yes.
Okay, all right.
Some of, we did get, we did get a handful of no votes, but there was a lot of properties that just didn't vote at all, one way or the other.
Okay. So, we talk about the thoroughfares and addressing the main arterials and collectors, Peachtree Road, North Druid Hills. Just for people in this room, tell me the process, where we are with the study, and is the city looking at addressing those streets?
Yes, I mean, there's, we've got pretty much, I think, two or three separate studies, specifically on this half with North Druid and Peachtree, we've got two separate studies going on right now. One is the study being done as part, directly as part of the MARTA TOD, which is kind of looking at the situation now, and probably for the next three to four years, when the MARTA TOD, depending on their zoning, if approved, would be expected to be built. And they're specifically looking at, they're mandated by Georgia DOT and Greta to address and make improvements to the intersection of North Druid and Peachtree Road. We also have, we're about to get underway with a more comprehensive study for this entire, for Peachtree, North Druid Hills, Dresden Drive, looking at for the next 20 years, and what improvements could be made over that timeframe.
So, nothing in this proposed plan would impact or prohibit those studies on North Druid and Peachtree?
No.
So, one of the other questions that was asked by one of the speakers was, why were the traffic numbers different? So there was a study that was done with peak hours, there was a study that was done with the police radar that showed, you know, 17,000 or 19,000 cars in a week. What are the actual numbers per...
The numbers we use, and there's a reason we don't use, the police trailer is good, collects good data, and it really can be effective in helping slow speeds, but there's being a radar unit, it doesn't necessarily always pick up all the vehicles, sometimes it, there's, you know, we can't use it for traffic studies, we use actual tubes on the road. But just looking through, on the traffic counts we had with the tubes, it was about, on Colonial coming over the bridge was just under 4,000 cars in a, in one day period. In Standard Drive, it's about 1,500 cars a day, this is the section of Standard between Matthews and North Druid. On Thornwell... Matthews and North Druid. On Thornwell, it's about 1,000 cars a day. Oglethorpe, 400. Pine Grove, 400, and Colonial, about 750 cars a day.
Okay. So, one of, another question was, how do you reconcile between the study that was done by the traffic consultant that we had, where the write-in, write-out and the write-in only was not, was either not recommended or omitted. I'm not sure which it was, but we ended up ultimately adding those. How did you come to that conclusion?
Well, this is, this is part of the process of working with the neighborhoods. We undertook the traffic study and, you know, as the consultant that we hired made what recommendations he felt were be made. But ultimately, this petition is being brought by the work of the neighborhood and their community. And, you know, in the discussions, you know, they had desires, the neighborhood had desires of the effectiveness of what was recommended. Would that really address the volume issue, the volume cut-through issue? And in, you know, in working with the neighborhood, they felt they wanted more stringent methods to be able to control the volume of traffic.
So, the, so the speed humps effectively don't control volume?
Correct.
They just do speed.
And I want to mention also, because I know a lot of the people had mentioned stop signs. Stop signs don't control volume either, and they don't, they don't, actually, we're not allowed to use them to control speed by the federal standards that, for stop signs, we must follow too. So, stop signs don't control volume either.
So, there was, there was a comment about effects to surrounding communities, specifically Brookhaven Fields. What's your professional opinion? You looked at that. That's part of our process, that you look at the regional impacts. What's your analysis?
For this measure, I mean, we looked at that and, you know, I can't, there's not a written study that we did, but we did look at that effect. And based on where the traffic is going, and this is a cut-through primarily between Peachtree Road and North Druid Hills Road, there's not, you know, affecting these closures won't divert traffic to Brookhaven Fields because that's beyond where, you know, traffic is going. The traffic is going to North Druid Hills Road and Briarwood Road. It's not going to Dresden Drive. It's not going to Clermont Road, at least not at this level. So, you know, the, there doesn't appear to be a route where it's going to be faster to go through Brookhaven Fields to avoid the north Peachtree Road, North Peachtree Road, North Druid Hills Road intersection and the Briarwood intersection for, for traffic that's now cutting through Brookhaven Heights.
All right. So, one of the other things that's in our traffic calming policy is that we take a look and evaluate after changes are made. Is that, is that the case, that six months after these changes, if they were to be implemented, we would take another look at this and look at the data?
Yes. And we do that, we do that, especially when we're doing with volume control measures. We want to go back and look at the effectiveness of the measures. Are they doing what they are doing? What is the impact? And I don't think we ever denied that there was, and even the study said, there was never denial, that there was going to be additional traffic on some roads, particularly Pine Grove and Colonial, but we'd be, to be able to evaluate the effect of that to see what the effect of that traffic is and the effectiveness of the measures that were put in.
Right. So, so I, I think that there are some, some very good questions, and I, and I really appreciate all the community coming out on both sides of this issue tonight. This has been an ongoing project for the last two years, and even going back beyond that to the beginning of the City of Brookhaven. As I have gone through Brookhaven Heights, it has been a number-one concern of this community to deal with traffic and traffic calming. When you hear numbers like 4,000 cars a day coming across Colonial, going in, and then using Thornwell, Standard, Oglethorpe, and Pine Grove to get out to North Druid Hills, you know that there is an existing problem. It's impossible to argue that we don't have a problem that needs a solution here. We have to do something. So, the issue then becomes, well, what is the right solution? And I think that what, what this process that we put neighborhoods through is intended to do is to, one, create thoughtful approach to making recommendations to address the concerns of the community. Two, it's to create awareness within the community. And believe me, while I know that 65% sounds like it's just a little bit over half of the neighborhood, you have 65% of the public who are saying that they are opting in to an inconvenience to their neighborhood, closing off of roads and access points and increasing in speed humps. That, that is a difficult thing to do when the natural tendency of people is to resist change, particularly when this traffic, you're correct, and someone stated that the origin of this traffic is that Peachtree Road and North Druid Hills are not operating efficiently. So, we as a city recognize that we've got to address those larger corridor problems. But in the interim, it is unfair to allow Brookhaven Heights to be a cut-through, when we know that we have solutions that, whether you call it permanent or temporary, there are solutions that could be implemented today that we would evaluate on an ongoing basis. So, I hope that people understand that this is a long, tedious process, and I'm disappointed that there's, there is still opposition. You know, I'd love for this to be a unanimous thing. That would be great, but we know that when we're talking about significant change, it's impossible to get unanimous consideration on this stuff. I'll leave a little time for the rest of the council to ask some questions.
Joe, go ahead. Joe, do you have questions first?
Yeah, I do. Just for clarity purposes.
Real quick. Again, counsel, let's ask questions, and then we can discuss once we have all the questions asked inter.
For clarity, one of the points brought up tonight was that by closing three, there's going to be additional problems on the additional roads. Richard, have you thought about that? Obviously, you have, but I want to hear, I mean, when they're saying there's going to be, they're having problems, well, I think what they really meant to say is they anticipate they're going to have problems, for clarity purposes. You're, well, I mean, if we haven't made the changes, okay, well, and let me, Richard, what will be the impact if we close those three roads on the remaining two streets? That's the question.
You know, I looked at it, and it's, you know, traffic modeling is not an exact science, so it's, it's tough to predict. It's not, you know, I didn't see it was going to double the traffic, because if, based on the evidence we have, the traffic's going to, mostly the biggest issue is in the PM peak, people coming from Peachtree going to North Druid, and then going on, and the evidence is that they're going to Briarwood. The predominant of those going to Briarwood. Those people going to Briarwood, it's felt, most of those are not going to want to try to make a left from Pine Grove and Colonial onto North Druid to make the right onto Briarwood, because it's just too, they can't make that left. There's nothing to be able to make that left on. So, yes, there's going to be some increase in traffic, but it's, you know, all the cars, the 200 cars that are right now exiting on Standard and Thornwell in the afternoon, not all 200 of those are going to go, will go to Pine Grove and Colonial, you know, is it half of those? Is it quarter of those? It's, you know, the modeling's not that exact to be able to tell, but it's, it's not all, it's not 100% of them.
Okay. Next question. When can we expect resolution of that traffic light at Peachtree and North Druid? Because that is a key part of this problem.
There will be, well, there's, we're constantly working with Georgia DOT, and there's different degrees of solutions. I know even on the repaving project that's underway right now, Georgia DOT is trying to look at some things they could redo with striping. There are this, supposedly this summer, they're going to be installing flashing yellow arrows at that light and at the Dresden light, which will help re, it's squeezing little, little bits of time out of it, but that will actually make the signal operate more efficiently, which can actually squeeze a little bit, actually, and help Dresden. Really, part of the problem at that light is not just the North Druid light, it's the Dresden light's the actual problem. Then, if the TOD was to go through, you know, they will be required to make improvements to that intersection to bring it up, to improve the level of service of that intersection. And they have to have those implemented before we would issue them a CO for any of their buildings. So, they, that's mandated by, well, that's man, Greta study will mandate that they have, that changes have to be made, then it would be as part, really as part of the process of the zoning process, whether those get implemented onto the MARTA TOD. Traditionally, if Greta has a development, it's tradition that the cities or the local jurisdiction will impose those as conditions of development. So, I won't want to say they'll be mandated, because ultimately, that's the council's decision as part of the approval of the MARTA TOD, if and when it gets approved. So, there's, there's going to be incremental changes over time. There's not just one big, huge, massive project coming down the pipeline to fix it, but there are measures being done right now.
All right. The last point I want to ask you, Bon, is, and I think this young lady here hit the nail on the head. Do you have traffic analysis about how many are coming over the bridge in both directions, AM and PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's obvious that this neighborhood's being flooded with cars, and the source of that flood point is that bridge. If you can get control of that bridge and control the flood from that point, we could potentially have the ability to solve this problem without going through all of these other effects. Now, maybe in the morning, I don't know. You said the most, the biggest, let's talk about the biggest problems at night. Most of the traffic is going, you're saying, from Peachtree to North Druid, so it's coming past the Starbucks and over the bridge, right?
Yeah.
So, if it was a no entry at night, you'd be cutting, you'd be closing the floodgates. Is that not correct?
I mean, it's, it's an option. I mean, that's what, you know, I think it was discussed at one point with the neighborhood, but that was not an option that they had, that they had desired or so.
Well, yep. I mean, let's, let's just think, let's get creative here for a second, you know. There should be a way to answer the problem. We know that the cause of the problem is coming from the bridge. So, is there a way to make it accessible for residents only? I, I don't know. Let's think about it. But if you can cut off where the flood is coming from, the majority of the flood, get it down to a trickle, there's a good chance that everybody can be satisfied. Now, if you look at the AM, if it's the same thing, look at what you need to do to control where the problem is sourcing. I don't think that's, I don't, I haven't, this young lady, I think, hit it right on the head when she came up and made that simple comment.
I think, well, the measures that are being proposed do address both the AM and the PM as far as sourcing. You know, as far as limiting during certain times of day to residents only or cutting off to residents only, I mean, that's not, that's another issue that I can't address, because that's a, that's another policy issue. Generally, it's a public road and, you know, we don't, you know, from our standpoint, we don't restrictively access, you know, selectively restrict access to public roads.
But we're doing that right off of North Druid Hills.
Well, no, we're not selectively, that's not selectively, I mean, it's all or nothing.
Yes, we are.
It's all.
Please, this is not appropriate for us. I'm going to have to interject and ask you, please, not to do that. No, but I think, you know, it is, because you're saying only the neighbors can enter, which is basically what that means.
Well, with, with measures that are proposed, it's, it affects both, we're saying it's affecting both the residents and the non-residents at those entrances. If, what you're talking about at Colonial would be to have a system where residents could enter and non-residents couldn't, essentially, I mean, de facto.
Maybe that's not the exact, maybe that's not the answer that will solve the problem. I don't know. But have we thought about it enough to maybe come up with what that answer could be? Because, you know, on some roads, just say, okay, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, it's a one-way, or 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, no entry. You know, all these options that you do with streets.
We, we did look at that with the signs, and that was one of the recommendations in the study. One of the things felt with both the neighborhood and, to some extent, the city, using signage to control that is only effective as the enforcement mechanism you have. So, then we're putting a burden not on, we're putting a burden on our police force to be able to enforce that. We can put signs up there, but if the police aren't able to enforce it, how effective is it going to be? And are we asking, going to ask the police to dedicate the resources away from what tasks they're doing right now to be able to enforce those, to be able to make sure that they can enforce those measures to a level of effectiveness that they are effective?
Okay, I'm, just for example's sake, maybe instead, instead of spending $25 per household for a speed bump, you have an assigned police officer there, what I'm saying. I'm saying, let's get creative about this, and let's make sure everybody is satisfied.
You can't.
I mean, you know, please, no, I'm not saying that, and I have a lot of respect for the way you guys went through this process, and I am respecting that. I'm going to tell you that.
Okay, Joe.
What?
Let's, you have any other question?
I'll wrap it up here. I'm just not sure we thought about that enough to really come up with a viable, because if we did, you know, maybe do it for a period of time, just to test it out. And maybe if everybody's satisfied and we see the numbers go down, then there's no need to move forward. And if not, well, then, fine, do it, you know, close those three roads.
Okay, okay. Lindling, do you have questions?
Yes, questions. What roads' residents were included in the 65%?
Every, all the roads in the Brookhaven Heights neighborhood, including the cul-de-sacs and the condo complexes, townhome complexes.
Okay. What measures, if any, were taken to verify the accuracy of the petition signatures? Or is that not part of what's generally done?
I mean, we looked at.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to ask questions.
We, what we do is, in, per the policy, we're required to use what the property owner listed that's on the county tax rolls. And we did verify, go through and verify the signatures that were, that were there. The signature, the petition form also requires a signature and a witness. Obviously, us as staff, we're not witnessing the signature, but, I mean, it is a petition form now. I, you know, I can't answer as far as a process of challenging a signature or anything like that, because that's beyond what, you know, scope of my duties are. But we did, you know, look to verify that, the signature of the form, I mean, some of it we're, and if it's a signature of a form that's someone that's listed on the tax rolls and it's got a witness to it, you know, that's what we're checking.
Thank you for clarifying. That's all I have.
John?
So, closing the three roads, what was, was the, what was the intent of that? Was the intent to decrease overall flow into the neighborhood? Why, why close the three roads?
It was to control the volume of traffic.
The overall volume?
The overall volume of traffic, yes.
In your opinion, the total number, that 4,000 number coming across Colonial in the afternoons will be reduced?
It's four, well, in the afternoon, it's 400.
400.
It will be reduced, yes.
Substantially?
Probably between, you know, it's, like I say, with the modeling, but it could be as, anywhere from 30 to 40% reduction. Probably 50, you know, based on the number of homes in the neighborhood, probably 50% of the volume that's coming over could be expected to be from the neighborhood. 50% is probably cut through, but even those are rough numbers, but just based on the size of the neighborhood.
And, and I think it was mentioned that once we, if this were to be implemented, after the back, after the fact, we will continue to count and we will continue to analyze the situation.
Correct.
And if it is found to be that what we presumed is inaccurate, and we need to roll back some of these changes, what would be the process for doing that?
Well, there's a couple of ways of doing it. One, the neighborhood could always re-petition, and if they came up with 65%, they could do that. But in addition, though, the council always, I believe, unless the, you know, the city attorney, city manager can correct me, but the city council always has the ability to remove these restrictions at any time.
So, ultimately, I mean, the council controls this bottom line.
Ultimately, the council controlled it with or without the petition. The neighborhood can take the initiative through a new petition process to do 65% for removal, but the, but the council can always take action at any time.
But council has the flexibility that, you know, if, in our judgment, you know, we do the counts and find that some of the assumptions that were, that were based on our decision were to not hold, we could, we could, you know, make a motion and make the change that week.
I believe so. I would defer to the city attorney on that, but I believe that's the case.
And as far as, I guess this is almost kind of a question for the city attorney. If some of the signatures were challenged, and if they were found to be fraudulent, what will be the status of this application after the fact, if it were to pass?
Well, after it passes, there would be no effect, because the council would have already taken the action. There's not a mechanism in the current policy to to forensically audit the, the signatures to see, first of all, as we had in the previous petition, somebody who wanted to change their vote, or who, an allegation that there's been an improper signature. We don't have that forensic process in the policy, and we don't have that budget in Public Works, or the staffing in Public Works to accomplish that mission. That is certainly something council could consider going forward, but it's not part of the current policy. So the, the answer, the short answer to your question, Council Member Park, is if council acts tonight, the status of the petition becomes moot because council have already taken action. And then we can simply evaluate whether or not the decision was appropriate based on the follow-up studies that the policy calls for.
Richard, what was the percentage taken from the neighborhood?
The, that voted approval?
Yeah.
Is about 66%. There was about, the total number was about seven, at least by our count, that we went by, was about seven votes higher than the minimum threshold.
I have one more question.
Well, I'll let John finish and I'll look.
And just to, in the, in the afternoon traffic, so there's no traffic light at Pine Grove or, what's the other one, Colonial?
There's, there's no traffic light at any of the entrances off of North Druid Hills.
Any of them. What a traffic, are there, is there a consideration in the future to have a traffic light at any of those intersections?
Not at this time. To put a traffic light in at any intersection, there's a minimum volume levels that have to be met. I'm not sure that any of these, the only one that might meet it is Colonial right now, today, possibly, but even then, it's probably, you know, it may not meet the, the minimum volume requirements for a traffic light. The effect of putting a traffic light, though, would be to basically funnel everybody to that way because it would make it easy to get in and out of the neighborhood, though.
So by making it difficult, so the, the reasoning is that by making, making it difficult to cut through, the, the time that you gain is, is, is lost?
Yeah. And actually adding a traffic light at any one of these five entrances would might even make it easier to cut through because it would make the turn onto North Druid Hills Road easier.
Right.
That's all I have. Bates?
So I have two more questions. One is, what was the traffic count on Colonial Drive all the way through to North Druid Hills? Do you have that one?
Well, that was a set, on the daily, it was 753 cars compared to Colonial Drive at the bridge of about 4,000 cars.
So, one of the things that I'm looking at that, that is in this proposed plan is, so the traffic that's on Peachtree Road that just wants to get south on North Druid Hills, they could have, and they, you know, as is, they could go down Colonial and get over to North Druid Hills and turn right and continue to cut through this neighborhood. We've got 700 cars doing it. Who knows how many of those are local cars or, or cut through, but 700. And after the proposed plan, that, that, that still exists. So I know, having traveled this road, that it, peak traffic hours, if you were on Peachtree and going down Colonial to get out to North Druid Hills, but ultimately wanted to go to Briarwood, you may spend all day trying to get out because of the amount of traffic that's backed up on North Druid Hills, trying to take a left onto North Druid Hills to get to Briarwood. And so it becomes an ineffective solution. You're, you're better off, you're going to stay on North Druid Hills and then go, or, excuse me, stay on Peachtree to North Druid Hills to get to Briarwood. So I don't, I don't see how logically those cars will go down Colonial all the way to North Druid Hills just to get back up to Briarwood. It, it logically doesn't make sense to me. The second question I had was about, you know, I, I do have concerns that we respect the, the interest of Brookhaven Fields. And one of the things that we've got to know before these plan, before these traffic solutions are implemented is, what's the baseline? So what, how many cars are cutting through Brookhaven Fields right now? Is it possible that we could simultaneous with this traffic calming, initiate a study for Brookhaven Fields so that we can at least get the baseline to know how many cars before these, these traffic calming solutions are implementing are going through Brookhaven Fields so that after these traffic calming solutions are implemented, we could see what's the change?
We could. To make sure that we're, the one thing we'd have to make sure of, and it may, well, the implementation, probably by the time we implement it, we'd be fine, is we'd have to do the baseline studies, we'd have to wait until school gets back in session to do the baseline studies. When we do traffic studies, especially when volume's concerned, we want to make sure we're doing with school in session because otherwise, you know, this time of year, even though traffic's still bad, it's not as bad as it is when school's in.
So if we were to approve this thing tonight, would it take, would you be able to install these, all these things before school got back in?
Probably not. Realistically, probably, because there's some detailed design that would have to be done in bidding and everything else, so.
I don't have any more questions. Thanks.
I want to revisit the, or, the question I have on baseline. I agree with Bates, having a baseline on Brookhaven Fields, if this were to pass, would be great data to have. What would you consider a fail on this, Richard? If we do this, and what, what count would you consider a fail if it didn't change? What percent on Colonial, on, on all the?
The, well, the two numbers I would look at would be the number of cars coming over Colonial Bridge, particularly in the afternoon peak. You know, right now, we had a, a baseline number when we did the study last summer, last year, went during the summer, of, you know, we said 411 in the afternoon. And what would that number be after we do this? Is it, how far has that gone down? Because that's gonna directly be, affect the cut-throughs. Because if that 411 is the same, then we're just essentially registered, like some of the people had mentioned, we're just redistributing the traffic that's already cutting through to other roads of the neighborhood, and we're not really effectively cutting off traffic. But if that number goes down, then that's an indication that we are, people are changing and not going through the neighborhood. We could also look at how much, what the increases, we also look at what the increases are on Matthews, Pine Grove, and Colonial on the southern end of the neighborhood as well. But the key is the Colonial at the north.
And, but what, in an engineering perspective, what would be, I mean, is there, you know, if we're down 10%, is that really, you know, are we really being successful in this matter?
I would, there's no hard, fast engineering's number that would be, but I would say, I would be looking for something 25% or higher, 20, 25% or more. 10% to me could be just, you know, due to other changes.
Okay. Speed bumps. I know that's the majority of the issue is about the lane closures or the, but speed bumps, was there, I would assume, was the neighborhood one pushing for the speed bumps? I, I, you know, all the stuff I see, as I've talked to you before, has found that speed bumps are, are an exact solution to, and more of a, a, something to make people feel good, but in fact, does not slow down or, you know, help with the cut-through itself.
It does not help with the cut-through volume. They can be, depending on what the initial speeds are in the neighborhood, they can be effective. Unfortunately, for our case here, because the baseline was done by DeKalb County, and these were installed before we became a city, we don't have that baseline data of what the speeds were in the neighborhood before the speed bumps were put in. You know, we can measure the speeds now, but they're measured with the speed bumps in, so obviously, it's gonna show that there's not a speeding problem, but that could be because the speed bumps are being effective. So one of the things with the speed bumps that we discussed with the neighborhood is that when the speed bumps were installed, some of the spacing of the bumps was not done correctly by DeKalb either. So they're either too far apart, or they're too close, or they're not situated properly with intersections. So a lot of what's being proposed with some of the additional speed bumps is to kind of correct some of those gaps. The intent, I think, we're working with the neighborhood on is that we know that, we, and we've talked about paving earlier tonight in the work session, this neighborhood is more than likely all these roads are gonna be repaved in the next three to five years, you know, most likely, just because of the general condition of them. In that, when we repave a road, we can relook at the speed bumps and the situation and reduce the number. Maybe on some of these roads where we have three or four, we can adjust the spacing and knock it down, eliminate some of them to reduce the total number. So that we, you know, we're, we're adding speed bumps in this plan to kind of correct problems with the spacing of the speed bumps that were put in before.
I don't.
Listen, I, I would, I will make a, a motion on this, if you're ready.
Make, make motion.
So, this again is something that, you know, in this motion, you know, you, I know that, that some people are gonna be upset with it. But I move that we postpone this traffic calming solution to the council meeting, which is 30 days from now. If you'll help me out with that date so that we know what that is. For the purposes of having public outreach, I, as your council representative, I'll be meeting with both Brookhaven Fields and Heights, and probably a third meeting. So that's the motion. What's the, what's the date?
July 12.
So I post, move that we postpone the consideration of this traffic calming petition to the July 12th council meeting.
I second.
Is that a proposal or a deferral? Does it really matter?
Deferral, deferral.
Yeah.
Language, it doesn't matter.
Okay. And motions, and, and second, let's discuss the motion.
So the reason that I'm, that I make this motion is that it has been the history and experience of, of myself and, and this council, that when we have, when we have petitions and considerations like this that have a lot of controversy, that a lot of that stems from people just not having all the facts, or feeling like not all of the options been explored. And when, as a government, we do want to make sure that we move slowly, we move deliberately, and we do things right. I can tell you that, that I have been supportive of Brookhaven Heights in this initiative over the two years, and I, I understand completely their frustration with the idea that they're gonna have to unify again, come out here and show support, and who knows what these next 30 days might bring. But I can tell you that in a process such as this, that's, that is a very important part of what we do. I represent all of the people who are for this, and I represent the many people who've spoken tonight who are opposed to this. And so it's important for me to get out there and speak to the community and make sure that we address this from both sides so that people, if they don't have all the information, we can get them the information. And if there are other things that we need to consider that haven't been thought of, let's talk about that and do it. So I promise to you that we'll have, I'll have at least three meetings on this issue before we consider this as a council again so that we have the, that opportunity. So that's why I hope that the council will support me in this deferral. It's, it's an important petition, and I, I understand that that really doesn't resolve this issue for any of the people out there. But it's the best solution for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Mr. Matt, Councilmember Madison, is it, your intent in your motion to have a, a second public hearing on these issues, or just council discussion and involvement?
I think we would go public hearing, wouldn't we?
Well, it's not required since you've had, one, this is the reason I was asking the question. I wanted to make sure that the record was clear about what your intent was, and so that neither the city or clerk, nor I get caught up in that.
Typically, sure. Typically, in the past, we've had a second public hearing because I, I don't want people to get to that point, want to speak on it, and not be able to. So I'd like to go ahead and, you know, have the standard public hearing.
Now, is the motion, amended motion, do you still second it?
Yes, my second stance.
Any comment from Lindley?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say to all of you that an incorrect email address was circulated for me because my name was misspelled. It's a family name. It's not common, I know, but it's L-I-N-L-E-Y Jones. And so to any of you to whom I didn't respond, I suspect perhaps that was the problem, and some people hunted down the correct one when it bounced back. But for your future reference, and in the month to come, as you communicate with us, please know that that's the case, or that you can email all of us at mayorandcouncil@brookhavenGA.gov. I found very persuasive Mr. Todd's point about the left turns onto North Druid Hills being dangerous. And I am interested, Chief, in having the statistics, the rec statistics for these three intersections, the partial closure of which is proposed. As far as the history of wrecks and collisions at, at all three of those, of course, our first and top concern is public safety. I do realize how hard the residents who gathered these signatures and went through this process worked in order to get to this point, and did so in compliance with the city's policies and procedures. I do recognize that. And I am concerned about this proposal pushing traffic elsewhere, and we need to address that too, of course, going forward. And I don't think anybody's opposed to addressing that moving forward, and making sure everybody all around this, this area of town is protected from excessive cut-through traffic from speeders and whatnot. That's all.
John?
I generally do not like deferrals. I think, please, please. It's in a very difficult night. We hear both sides. I do not like, in general, having hearing after hearing, whether it be for zoning or for traffic calming. But at the same time, I do have a certain level of respect for other electeds and their prerogatives in their districts with their, with the, with the constituents that they represent. So I would defer to Councilwoman Madison's wishes and, and vote for this postponement.
Anyone else in the comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the deferral to the July 12th meeting? Please say aye.
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 Please unanimous, it's deferred.
Take a five-minute recess.
Yep. Yep. We'll, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Nobody cares about the time.
Hush now. Chris. Okay. We are now moving to the setting of the 2016 millage rate. Carl, if you would, and Christian, will you start us off?
Just a quick introduction. This is, you know, a required process by the, I'm assuming it's either the Georgia Code or, yeah, the Georgia Code. This is first of three public hearings on the necessary deliberation on the taxation and the increases potentially thereof. Carl will walk through that process. It's a moving target, this process is, because we're always getting new numbers from the county based on appeals and those types of things. So the numbers you see tonight may change. And we also have some inquiries on how this relates to our charter provisions as of freezing the, the assessed value on homestead properties. But we'll get all that cleaned up before the next meeting, but this is the first of three. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople and citizens. It's the first of three necessary public hearings for the tax millage rate. We're obligated, per Georgia, we're obligated per Georgia Code to advertise the hearings, basically because the millage rate for the, for the city of Brookhaven was established based on the current millage rate. The notice of the meeting was posted on the champion on May 30th, was posted on the city's website. Notice of the meeting was posted on the champion on May 30th, was posted on the city's website. Again, those are requirements by the state of Georgia. On December 15, 2015, the city adopted the 26th budget with the proposed millage rate of 2.7 full mills, which is the current millage rate. The adopted budget projected 6 million 762,480 dollars in property taxes. This was based on the tax digest, and assuming a real property digest growth of 2.4 percent. That's consistent with what we had seen in the previous years, and that was utilized in establishing the budget. The next slide shows the comparative tax digest millage rates. You see going across the top, you see the years 2013, 2014, the last certified millage rate of 2015, then you see 2016 for 510, and 2016 for 518. Again, as the city manager has noted, we continue to receive revised digest, there are still people that are appealing their assessments, there are still people applying for exemptions, and until such time as we adopt the millage rate, we expect to get probably at least two more certific, two more digests from DeKalb County Tax Commissioner's Office. Going to the far right, you see the real property is 3.2, almost 3.3 million dollars. Just for comparative purposes, in 2013, it was 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars. But also, since that time, we have annexed in the Choe Executive Park area, which is part of this tax digest. Another thing to be of note is the changes in personal property. You see going from 2013, it went from 72 million dollars, and you see as of 2015, it's 177, almost 178 million dollars. The main thing to note there with personal property taxes, notice the decrease from 2014 to 2015, and it continues to decrease this year and 2016. And the next item you see is motor vehicles. This is the ad valorem tax. This is the old birthday tax that is still being somewhat expired, and eventually it will fade away, as we revert to another type of taxation for motor vehicles. And you see the gross digest in the next main subtitle of 3.5 million dollars. Less MNO maintenance and operation exemptions of 653 million dollars, and the net MNO digest is 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollars. Looking at the 2015 column, you see our net digest was almost 2.6 million dollars. Below that, you see the changes in the calculation of the taxes, to the changes in the millage rates, to the net taxes levied based on that millage rate and the gross and the net MNO digest, and you see the effective tax increases. Noting in the last two columns, the rollback is projected to be 2.411, as of the digest provided on 510, as of the digest provided at the Tax Commissioner's Office on 518, projected the rollback rate would be 2.432 mills. Next slide is a different slide, it's kind of a newer slide. The yellow indicates what the rollback rate should be, what is projected to be, and the red outline indicates what the adopted digest, what the adopted millage rate is by the City of Brookhaven. You see that for 2014, 2015. For 2016, you see the yellow highlights where the rollback rate would be. The red lines indicate what our current millage rate is, at 2.74 mills. And further to the right, you see what our cap is, of 3.35 mills. Below that is a small chart that just shows those same numbers. The next slide, this is an analysis of our real property tax digest. You notice the residential property is almost 2.2 billion dollars, and our residential property comprises almost two-thirds of our tax digest, at 66.2 percent. Our commercial digest is at 33.2 percent. Okay, this explains the changes in our digest going from 2015 to 2016. Our 2015 digest was 3.2 million dollars. We subtract the motor vehicles of 20 million dollars. We add new real property of 29.2 million dollars. This is real growth or improvements to real property in the City of Brookhaven. You subtract the change in personal property of 40 million dollars, and you add back reassessments of 322 million dollars, almost 323 million dollars. This is what is calculated to call the inflationary increase in the digest, and you arrive at what the gross digest is for 2016, at 3.5 billion dollars. Again, this just puts it in a graphical form of that difference. 92 percent of the change in the digest was due to inflationary growth, 8 percent is due to real growth. The next slide shows the Brookhaven residents' millage rate and taxes. It's an important thing to note, at the bottom, you see the total millage rate of 39.03 mills. DeKalb County operations, hospitals, DeKalb County bonds, DeKalb County unincorporated bonds, fire, all of those millage rates are less than they were in the previous year. DeKalb County's millage rate would be decreased for the citizens here in Brookhaven. Last year, 3.3, this says 39.03, I think last year was 41.19, is last year's millage rate. For the next slide. This shows DeKalb County's millage rate, this excludes the school board. You see that, so this is what DeKalb County is building, the residents and the property owners in DeKalb County. In 2013, it was 16.25 mills. Across to 2016, it's 12.09 mills, and last year was 14.67 mills. So, you have a decrease of 2.59 mills in the millage rates that DeKalb County is proposing for the residents in the City of Brookhaven for 2016. The next slide, this is the special tax district, which was incorporated, which was annexed into the city in December 2014. The projected first-year cost, including capital, projected to be 683,000 dollars. Projected cost for the first year came in at approximately 575,000 dollars, as part of the audit we just concluded. The preliminary 2016 net real property digest for the special tax district is 63 million dollars. This is a 4.6 million or a 7.8 percent increase in the tax digest, just in the special tax district. The millage rate for year one, for the special tax district, was 1.5 mills, which was less than the 4.21 mills. This is basically because we knew there was initial startup, and so we didn't ramp up at 100 percent at the start of the year, so we tried to provide a millage rate to provide funding just for 2015. This is the second year of the special tax district, and the proposed millage rate is 6.45 mills. And this, the last slide shows the comparative digest information, just for the, solely for the special, excuse me, solely for the special tax district. You notice this year, we collected about 87,000 dollars in property taxes, based on the most recent tax digest and absence of any rollback of their millage rate, and based on adopting the millage rate that's proposed of 6.45 mills, there'd been an increase of 323,000 dollars in property taxes for the special tax district. That concludes my presentation.
And I apologize, being the first one. Do we ask questions at this point, or do we open for public comment? Okay. Okay. I open public comment.
And I just have one card.
Give us that one card.
Okay, Suzanne Malabet.
Thank you. Well, I am very lucky, because I was here for the Brookhaven Heights meeting, and then noticed that the tax rate was on the agenda. But, as I said earlier, I've been a resident of Brookhaven for over 20 years, and the property taxes obviously go up every year. And imagine my surprise when I opened my tax bill yesterday, and found that apparently my property value went up by 50 percent. And so, I would like for you to take a look at the digest, I guess is what it's called, because if that's indicative of all the properties within Brookhaven, then please lower the rates. I don't believe my property has gone up by 50 percent in one year, so I will be fighting that anyway. But, you know, if that is the case throughout our city, which is great for the city, then, you know, please adjust the rates accordingly. Thank you.
Seeing, being no more public comment.
I could send back there a few minutes ago.
Good. Quick, and then fill one out. Catherine, come up, and you can finish it after your talk.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Catherine Bernard, 1321 Oaklawn Avenue, and I am here to ask for a rollback. We have just a fantastic, fantastic tax digest here. We are one of the, you know, richest, most dynamic, most comfortable cities, and I think we can set a great precedent for lowering property taxes. Obviously, y'all don't have control over what our county is doing, and there are a number of problems that everyone is aware of there, but you do have the power to roll back the millage rate in accordance with the fact that there is more, that there are more taxes being collected. So, I think that would be a great precedent to set. One of the great things about Brookhaven is we do, even though we are such an affluent community, we do have a lot of diversity throughout the community. A lot of folks who have been in their homes for a significant amount of time, and they are seeing their property taxes go up, and it is a burden to folks who are on fixed incomes. So, I think this is really, this is really something that, it's hard to see why we would need to keep the millage rate at the same level, when rolling it back would allow us to provide that relief to very deserving homeowners. So, thank you, and that is what I would urge.
Hearing none? No other comments, closed, public comment. Okay. Do we ask questions? And I, this is my first millage.
Carl, I'll just ask one quick.
I'm sorry, you have the discretion to either ask questions at this time, defer the questions until the very last public hearing, or ask questions at any point in the three-hearing process. So, just to clarify, and answer your question.
Anyone want any questions?
I'll ask one question, and you can start doing the math and tell us later, and we can move on. For a, my understanding is that the median home value in Brookhaven is about a half million dollars. What would be the comparable city taxes that would be saved with our current millage rate and the full rollback rate? What would that taxpayer save if we were to roll back all taxes? That's all.
Okay. Anyone have other questions?
Yes, I'd like to know from you, Carl, where are our reserves, and are our reserves satisfactory, so that we can be comfortable rolling back the millage rate further? Again, because we've certainly rolled it back previously.
I would envision, prior to the next public hearing on this, that the administration would provide some strategic financial options for the board or the city council to consider. The reserve definitely would be one of them. Another one would be funding sources for the Parks Master Plan and other strategic initiatives that this board had, this city council has expressed interest in making progress on. At the end of the day, it's the board's prerogative up to not only the 2.7, but all the way up to the cap as well. But, there are some strategic issues, being a young city, and all the planning that we would have done is to get going on those things, and that will require funding.
Thank you.
Joe? Do you know what the millage rate is or will be for Dunwoody, Carl, in the upcoming year?
I have not. I could put in a phone call, the most recent advertisement, of course, everybody's advertising at this time for the millage rates.
Right.
So, they've advertised the same rate, so they haven't advertised a rollback, but that doesn't mean they're not rolling it back.
Well, one of the things we were proud of is that we were the lowest in DeKalb County, tied with Dunwoody for millage rate. Just curious where that is. Under the general fund comparative tax digests, when you see personal property going down from 2014 at 215 million, in year 215, going up to 218 million, and then going down to 177 million, what's the rationale for the decrease there?
Well, most of the personal property that is, I really hate the term when they say "personal property," because most of that is the inventory and the materials, machinery and equipment, and most of our commercial and industrial establishments. That's typically where your personal property taxes are coming from. And so, if you have a shift where a business leaves that had a significant investment in plant and equipment, or in machinery, your personal property digest would note that impacted that decrease.
And then, when you see the motor vehicle tax going down, is that because of the change in the law, where you could buy three years or four years?
Correct. The change in the law was not having the birthday tax, that's just been called forever. It made that aspect of the tax decrease, but the other aspect of motor vehicle tax, where it's been reported, reported and collected now, is offsetting that. So, it's not necessarily an ad valorem-based tax, as it previously was, but the birthday tax is more of a, is more of a tax on the value of the vehicle, as particularly at purchase, or when you acquire a new vehicle.
Right. Is that a one-time hit, when we see this big decrease? So, next year, we should be more in line with where it's faring out this year? Okay, so we got over that bump. On the DeKalb millage rate, the question is, we have a 17.7 percent reduction in Brookhaven, it's the largest of all the different cities in there. And the reason for that is?
I think before we had, when we had a discussion about millage rate, we talked about one of the things that DeKalb County has done over the last 10 to 15 years, is they've established special districts, not in, in two particular areas, for services, they have special districts for parks, and they have a special district for police. They've established special districts for incorporated and unincorporated areas, and they've balanced the millage rate throughout all of those special districts to cover the tax, to cover the cost of providing those different services. If anybody's been in DeKalb more than 10 years ago, DeKalb County Valley had a significant fund balance. Right now, they've probably met their reserve fund balance in all of their tax districts and in their general fund, and that's how they did it. It's one of the things that me and Christian have talked about, is that we start looking at planning where Brookhaven is going in the immediate future, is looking at how we can establish and segregate costs, provide adequate funding for whatever those items are, whether they're operating, whether they're capital, whether they, the plans that we already have in place, to provide the capital infrastructure here in the City of Brookhaven, requires that we look at all of that, and looking at the millage rate as part of that funding mechanism.
Right. And then last, in answer to this lady's question, as far as property tax going up 50 percent, what we would be advising citizens to do at that point, would you make sure that they would challenge their millage rate with the county, correct?
Everybody should challenge it. And I think Mr. Gavie, Councilmember Gavie, I think you were very instrumental in instructing people on how to challenge their assessments last year.
Right. I think we need to put that out again.
Somebody maybe to do that.
So, the course of action is really not to seek it through lower taxes here, for the most part, but it's to challenge what they're doing, and 50 percent seems to be a bit absurd, for sure. Bates?
Two points. One is, for clarity, you know, so, to, the answer to, is that, is that normal for all of our humps in Brookhaven? You can tell by the reassessments graph, where you have 322 million dollars worth of reassessments, and base that on our, on the total property taxes for real estate, we've had a 10 percent increase. So, citywide, it's been at 10 percent. I think it'd be nice to clarify that in our graph. I don't know if you put it on the add reassessments, so that's, you can say 10 percent increase in real property, or in the gross digest, however you want to put it. And it would be nice to know if you could have an asterisk at the bottom of that slide that says what the increase in real estate, real property is in the metro Atlanta area. So, I don't know if 10 percent is much higher than metro Atlanta, or lower, but if that's possible to do, I think it'd be nice to know. The second comment I had was on the, was really just a general comment. One of the things when we're setting this city's tax rate that's most important is those future, you know, those future needs issues. One, we know that we have the potential for decreasing host with incorporation of new cities, and how is, you know, what, how do we deal with that? How do we get to that adequate reserve level? And then also, how do we fund those things that we're not funding now, like the bike ped plan, and Peachtree Creek Greenway, and some of those initiatives? Because I'm all for rolling the cities' rate back, but we have to do it in a way so that we don't end up, when we're in a down cycle of the economy, that's the worst time to be throwing a tax increase on our citizens. So, I want to make sure that we are building up reserves to prevent against us doing that.
Okay. My, I echo a lot of the questions that people already have. Would that personal property decrease be the DeKalb DA's tax abatement from Primmer Summit? Would that be? Because a lot of that was building and personal property, was my assumption with some of that. Would that be the reason why we have a deduction in our, in the personal property?
Would that be the reason why we have their deduction in our, in the personal property?
It probably would factor into that.
Okay, so that would be the large, on the personal property idea. Other residential, how much of that is homesteaded properties?
I've already asked DeKalb County's Tax Commission Office to provide some additional information. Usually we don't get that in much detail. We usually get the summary numbers. They told me it may take a day or two for them to run that information for me.
And is it not true, if you have homestead, your property tax assessed value for city taxes is frozen?
We've had this, this is part of a discussion we had last year. We talked about exemptions, we started making sure that everybody, if they thought that their top property taxes, their property values were increased inappropriately, they shouldn't may follow their appropriate appeals. And one of the issues that we did talk about at that time was making sure that you got a freeze on your assessment. Contra, I guess you've spoken to the city manager, and he, from me, so I've spoken to DeKalb County about it, and they're going to provide me some written information as regard to how do you apply for the freeze. There's been some discussion that it only lasts for three years. Well, I want them to tell me how long the freeze lasts, and if you have to reapply after three years, DeKalb County will give us that information. But we've had some of this discussion last year at the same time we were doing the millage rate discussions.
Chris, isn't it part of the charter that it's frozen if you apply for homestead? So how would that be, per our charter, how would that be thrown out?
Yeah, I was just looking at that as Carl was speaking, Mr. Mayor, and I don't see a three-year sunset on that as the tax commissioner is trying to claim. That'll be a conversation that the tax commissioner and I, or the finance director and I will have going forward to try to sort that out, because it's not supposed to. It's supposed to add last, the assessment is frozen as of the filing, the year before the filing for homestead of the current owner of the real, of the residential real property. And the charter does not say it's sunset, so I'm.
So a person who lived here at the time of incorporation had its homestead would have their assessed values for city purposes only frozen at that homesteaded rate. Is that not correct?
That's the way I read the charter.
And that any future persons who move into ours and file for homestead, their rate for city taxes is frozen at the time of their homestead filing?
As of the value, the assessed value of the property in the year prior to the filing of the homestead exemption for that new owner, yes. So if a person moves into Brookhaven in 2016, they file for homestead exemption upon the purchase of their residence, their assessed value for city taxes only is frozen as of the 2015 assessment.
And so from now until the end of time, that number, whatever that assessed value would stay the same?
As I read the charter, yes, sir.
As long as they didn't move.
As long as they didn't move.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, as long as they're.
Or didn't build a new, does that?
Or add value.
Is there add value?
There is an add value or add additional property. So if they bought a lot next to it and changes, that can change it. If they remodel and add a story, those kinds of things can change those numbers and change those entitlements. But there's, as far as the sunsetting provision that the tax commissioner is trying to claim exists, I don't see it. So we'll have to have that conversation with the county.
Yeah, I would very welcome that conversation. Make sure we are protecting our.
Just as a point of order, the tax commissioner didn't tell me there was a sunset provision. There's been conversation, not from the tax commissioner's office, that there's a sunset provision and that you have to reapply after three years. So I asked the tax commissioner's office to clarify exactly what that is.
Okay, we need to clarify that and make sure that they're complying with our charter. So it's safe to say that if, if, if that's the case, this 13% increase or 10% increase in assessed value, those are, those are coming off of commercial properties and non-homesteaded residentials?
I don't, I think the question we're trying to get answered is that the 13% applies just to the book, the digest, period.
Okay.
Not to the number that our rates apply to.
Gotcha.
And we're trying to find out from the county if they have already netted out our charter provision by giving us that number on the total digest. I'm guessing that the digest is just the base number. Far as calculation for taxes, it's a separate exercise, and that'll be important for Carl to kind of run to the ground as you deliberate whether you do a rollback, and if so, by how much.
So, okay.
I have a quick, sure, question on, follow-up on that. So it, to me, one of the things is that there is, there is a sunset provision on that homestead exemption freeze with the state legislature. And I believe it was last year that Fran Miller actually re-upped the, the homestead exemption.
That was for, that was for county taxes.
It's for, yeah, but it's a valuation. I mean, it's a, it's, it's giving the ability to get a freeze on the valuation of the, of the house. And if that were to disappear, you know, say that had not been re-upped, or at some point, I think that's still, there's still a sunset provision on that bill, that legislation.
I think that's, I think that's, the charter would still control.
Charter.
So for our purposes, it would only be the proper, you know, it's our charter, what that sunset would be for county taxes and county school board taxes and state taxes, the stuff we don't control, really.
Right. And specifically, 508D of the charter says that there's no, shall not be necessary to make application thereafter for any year, and the exemption shall continue to be allowed to such person as long as they maintain the residence as a homestead.
Right.
So as far as the county, the city's taxable assessment of that property, that value is frozen in time from the year prior to the homestead exemption's filing, and that continues in perpetuity as long as that person maintains that residence as a homestead.
I'm just thinking about for the tax, from the tax assessors, this really is not a city issue, but the tax assessor's going to have to all of a sudden have multiple values on there that they keep a record of, and they're going to have, you know, I don't know that they have capacity for that right now.
Well, I can just tell you my, because when I found, figured this, you know, this recently out, we were talking, I looked at my tax bills from last year, 14 and 15, and they've kept, it's complicated and they don't lay it out clearly, and that's something we need to talk about the tax commissioner when they put the assessed value, because they put the assessed value, what, and then they do a rollback on the freeze, which in the end equals out for the city person. So there's some things we could talk to the tax commissioner for clarity on our, because it shows it all there, but in a complicated fashion. So that's something we, we need to, you know, talk with the tax commissioner and how they present our tax data. Any other questions? Hearing none, we're moving on. The mayor's announcement, welcome, Christian.
Thank you. How you like your first day?
So everyone was here to see you, and they all laughed. Anyway, any agenda announcements? I have no, I have no other announcements. Anyone have, any other comment? Oh, I guess we do have the brand-new seal that is above me now. It's a long time coming. Our map is now gone, and our nice official seal is here.
I claim this, it's mine.
Any other announcements? Hearing once, gone twice, gone. Agenda announcements. Hearing none, public comment. Regular public comment.
Let's go.
I did not, getting there, getting there.
Well, I have two cards from Terrell Carstens. Did you mean?
You may only speak one. One is for and one is against.
Terrell Carstens, Usnala Drive. One thing, before you get to the consent agenda, if you could address the city attorney or whoever about item three, what that entails. I know you don't have to, but I sure would appreciate it as far as why it's in the consent agenda and what it is. And the other one, thanks Susan for reminding me, is that when you were talking about the fireworks issue and trying to figure out how to do that and the dates and all of that good stuff, just keep in mind that in some of the neighborhoods, we've come to a courtesy agreement where we let each other know because everybody appreciated the nine o'clock cutoff time. And so we let each other know on our list server through next door if we are going to be setting off fireworks or anything, because we've got special needs children. It totally freaks them out, and the parents like to know in advance so they can make sure that their child is comforted and ready for it, and also the animals in the neighborhood. So that's it.
Any other public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Zachary Bradley.
I think he came and left.
Didn't that say it?
Okay. Hearing no more public comment, that's closed. Consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. All those in favor? Yeah.
Just as a, just as a comment, a discussion, can you, can you explain the consideration and approval, member of random of understanding, with state?
There was a complaint filed against the city of Brookhaven and the attorney general's office claiming that we were overcharging for access to police dash camera video. That complaint was filed by a member of the media. The city had been following a policy consistent with most of the cities in the northern arc, particularly in northern DeKalb, of charging a flat fee for production of dash cam video. A strict reading of the text of the Open Records Act says that you can't charge a flat fee for something like that, you have to charge the actual costs, less the hourly rate of the least expensive employee, at the rate of the least expensive employee, less the first 15 minutes of that person's work. The police department had undertaken a review of all the various flat fees that were being charged, picked a number that was less than everybody else's, but the attorney general's office still found that to be illegal, and they asked us to enter into this memorandum of understanding, acknowledging that the flat fee was inappropriate, making us change our policy, and assessing the penalty for the improper policy.
Thanks.
Okay, here's motion second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
It is consented to unanimously. No other announcements, old business, new business, consideration approval of the award of the Pacific, of professional services to the character areas planning project.
Thank you, mayor and council. It's a project that's been a long time coming. We've been discussing it for some time now, but we were able to put out a bid, or an RFP. We received three bids from three different consultants, Horsley-Witten Group, Sycamore Consultant, APD Urban Planning and Management, myself, deputy director, I believe, or director of Parks and Rec, had reviewed, and as well as Richard with Public Works, reviewed and scored each of the bids. We determined that Sycamore was the most deserving based upon what they shared in terms of their scope and response to the, to the RFP. And luckily, they also came with the lowest in terms of their, their bid. So the initial bid for Sycamore was $92,736. We asked for a best and final offer, which slightly delayed our response in bringing this before you, but it was a, it was a worthwhile effort because it was decreased to $83,250. Just to give a quick overview for those that may be listening through the web, the 2034 Conference Plan, which is adopted in November 2014, identifies, identified 13 character areas. Of the 13 character areas, there are nine areas that predominantly residential and developmentally of single-family detached residential dwellings. While the plan document provides description, vision statements, and general implementation strategies, the city has found that additional review and recommendation policy development is necessary for each area to further maintain, preserve, and enhance the character, character of existing single-family residential neighborhoods. With that said, I would ask that council approve the, the project as presented. Thank you.
John?
If it's okay, I'm ready for a motion. I move that we approve the award for professional services, the character area planning project to Sycamore Consulting for $83,250.
Second.
There's a motion second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favors, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay. Old business, public comment number two. Thank God. Mayor's comment, again, thanks, council, for the approval of the character area studies. I think this is going to be a good, when I was campaigning, I think other people were campaigning, going door-to-door, I ran into a lot of people, especially people who had done on the original character area studies and felt like that the city had not fully, well, the comp plan, and they, the city had not fully dived into the character area studies. I believe this is going to help us in our character, our zoning rewrite and bring a lot of education and community outreach, and I look forward to that. With that, no executive session. Someone make a wish.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who wants to be killed? Unanimous.
Concept I sent you last night.